Okay, we have a fairly large agenda packet here tonight. We've got a lot of documents in here and we put a bunch of copies out there, but I'm sure they're probably already gone. But this information is all on the county website. You can Google search that or you can link to that off of the Facebook page, but this entire packet is on the website in its entirety. So we have our minutes from January the 23rd, 2020, the minutes from a scheduled public hearing. And this one was on... This was the one on the ordinance O-01-20 to amend Chapter 6 to the County Ordinance Regulating Possession and Sale Distribution of Alcoholic Beverages. Any of the old that have looked at this minutes, is there any quest... No, not questions, excuse me, corrections or any concerns or anything that needs to be changed before we sign these into the record? We're just signing these into the record. Okay, hearing none, we'll sign this first one into the record.
What are you signing into the record?
This is just the minutes from the public hearing, just the documenting of what took place.
When was that?
Okay, the second set of minutes from that same night on January the 23rd, we also had a public hearing on some requests on zoning and variances and all on several pieces of property from the Carolyn Simpson to the Jimmy Simpson Foundation. Several of those are on there. So is there any corrections on those minutes before we sign those minutes into the record? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record. Okay, also that same night on January the 23rd was our regular scheduled meeting where we did have some action items that we took on some unserviceable equipment, approval of some zoning, and tabled a request on some property variance. On those as well, is there any corrections or concerns with those minutes and their accuracy? Hearing none, we'll sign these into the record.
Commissioner, if I may, I just want to thank Becky and recognize the extensive well done.
Detail.
That's a job well done. Thank you for taking the time to, instead of summarizing to capture all that, thank you very much for that.
Okay, on our agenda after our minutes, we had some old business on the Robert Wilson request for conditional use variance for property located at 5665 Highway 193 Flintstone on tax partials 0-506-1-026. At the last meeting on January the 23rd, we tabled this and referred this back to the planning office to develop a vegetation barrier for the property. After speaking to the Wilson family here tonight and talking with them, there's still some work that they want us to work with them on with this, and so they have requested that we tabled this until the next meeting and we're going to get back together and work out the details, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not going to take any action item on that old business, we're just going to table that again tonight and bring that back at the next meeting to get all of that worked Okay, under new business, item number one, ordinance 0-0120 to amend Chapter 6 of the County Code of Ordinance to clean up language addressing the county fee schedule for license to sell alcohol. This was the original notice that was put out about making an amendment to that ordinance that encompassed the setback requirements, but as we worked through public comment and input from folks, this particular modification to the ordinance is pretty simple in the fact the only thing it's addressing is just to clean up the language the way the licensing and permit was done. In the past, the license amount was written in there exactly what the amount was, and typically that should be done by just a separate fee schedule. So anytime the fee schedule needs to change, that's an easy, simple resolution and you don't have to do a whole ordinance change. And so this is just to clean up that language and to modify that. Chapter 6 of the fee schedule is taken out, but it references this in this ordinance. Is there anything additional to that that needs to be stated?
It just also clarified that the license will not be prorated during the year. It's going to run from during the entire term of our fiscal year, which is October 1 through September 30 of the year.
Right, and it's the protocol they've been following and that also further clears that up.
Correct.
Very good. Okay, so we're going to adopt that change in tonight. Any ordinance changes has to be attested by our clerk. Okay, item number two is Resolution R-004-20 to authorize a referendum to reduce the distance requirements between a church building and a bona fide eating establishment from 300 feet to 150 feet only for the premise consumption of alcoholic beverages. Part of the public hearing we had last time, we also had in the first draft as far as packaged sales of alcohol and was looking and looking for feedback on that as far as modification there. We have taken that language out and we're not talking about packaged sales. Packaged sales, the ordinance will stay as it is. This is to just address alcohol by the drink at a bona fide restaurant, and there are requirements that a restaurant has to already do as far as square footage, size of kitchen, percentage of sales that has to be food, and so those requirements are already in place. What this would do would put the question on the ballot to you, the voters, to make the decision on this in May, on May 19th. And that question is, it's a yes or no question. Shall the governing authority of Walker County reduce the distance requirement from the front door of a bona fide eating establishment as defined in Chapter 6 of the Walker County Code of Ordinance from 300 feet to 200 feet for on-premises consumptions of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits in the unincorporated area of Walker County? Question mark. If you are in supportive of that change going from 300 to 150, you would vote yes. If you are against that change, you would vote no. And this is a binding referendum, so whatever the vote is on May 19th, that's the procedure that we will follow after that. If it's voted down no, we don't change anything. If the vote is yes, then we would modify the ordinance to justify the wishes of the voters of Walker County.
Could you read that one more time, please, sir?
Sure. The question that will be on the ballot on May 19th, shall the governing authority of Walker County reduce the distance requirement from the front door of a bona fide eating establishment as defined in Chapter 6 of the Walker County Code of Ordinance from 300 feet to 150 feet for on-premises consumption of malt beverages, wine, and distilled spirits in the unincorporated area of Walker County? So this does not include any businesses that are located in any of the cities. These are only restaurant locations that would be in the unincorporated area. And so it's just a simple yes or no question that would be on the ballot, and it is a binding referendum, then the voters would have spoken and then we would know how to proceed.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir.
May I have five minutes to...
We would ask you, you come to the podium and state your name, and we'll give you five minutes.
My name is Eddie Frye. I'm a longtime resident of Walker County since 1980. I served in the military in the Panama conflict and the First Gulf War. I have been a pastor of Mountain View Baptist Church for eight years, and I love Walker County. Thank you for the opportunity. As I travel in my secular job, I have traveled to New Orleans, Florida, Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, and Georgia. And for the last 24 years, that's been my job to get new business. In all these little towns all over Georgia, Alabama, and all these different states, I've been where we're at today. I've ate in restaurants, half of them had alcohol, but half didn't. I was just pleased to hear from the last meeting that it is okay for three business owners to take away all rights of the church. There's 134 churches in this county, but just three businesses brung this up. I asked this question. When someone is hungry and they can't get food stamps or EBT, will the county pay for them to be fed? If someone needs their rent to be paid, will the county pay their rent? If someone needs clothes for someone that doesn't have clothes, will the county buy them clothes? We all know the answer. But just the other day, someone come to our church and says, hey, can you help me pay for my rent? Can you help me pay for my water bill? Can you give me some food? We did. We didn't have a buffer saying, no, I'm not going to talk to you. We want to help the community. With the church's help, we help those people. Today, I want to stand for all the churches to keep that buffer zone to 300 yards. What it's about is what is a right? A business has a right, the church should have the right. Why should we take away from the church if the business had a problem, they come to you? What we're setting here is precedence. If I can get three churches to come together and say, we have a grievance, are you going to put that upon the next election? The answer is no, you're not. This is setting the precedence. Number two, I do appreciate you calling me. After I called you, you called me back, and I do appreciate that. And one thing that I did say is, I would take and bring a petition. Now, I just worked on this for 10 days. I've got 636 names, and I want to give you that, it's the actual copy. What would it take to not put it on the ballot? If you say 3,000 petitions, you give me 20 days, I'll do that. You tell me. I want to work with you. I want to do what's right for the county. I want to do what's right for each individual resident. There's another thing. We talk about all these different regulations, and I get it, I understand where we're at, and I understand we've got to have money to pay for things. I get that. But listen to this. How is our county... This is going to better our county. We say money? We say revenue? Okay. Is that what it is, or is it where someone's going to make money off of selling the price of property that's close to a church? There's 700 miles, I think, that's got face front property that anybody can buy, and coming from Chickamauga to here, I know of five that someone could buy and put a restaurant in. I get what the restaurant has to do. I deal with that daily. But we talk about chicken houses, they've got 400 feet. We're trying to take and go 1,000 feet. Is a chicken more important than a church? Listen, I love chicken. I'm a Baptist preacher. But I love God more.
Amen.
Mr., can I say something?
Sure, come on in.
I'll tell you, I love God too.
Amen.
I'd just like to say something. I appreciate y'all's time and everything, and I appreciate what y'all doing. But one thing about it, 1,000 feet ordinance we used to have from our churches and our schools, I don't know what happened from arithmetic to 300 feet. But our kids that we're looking at for our next generation, and you know, our schools and churches, just like I said, you know, last time, not going through what I said last time, but I'm just saying this, we need to think about it hard and heavy. We don't need it around our churches and schools. I don't want our kids to think this is what it is. And you know, I just thank you so much for your time, but I'd like for them to think that 1,000 feet, God knows it was here last time, if you go to that Tiger Market I said last time, it's 1,000 feet to Brother Tony's Church. That's where the ordinance used to be. And now we got to change to 300 to try to go to 150. Now, thank you, sir, I appreciate y'all's time.
My name's Tony Jackson, I'm pastor at Fairview South Baptist Church, and I appreciate you letting me speak. You made mention on the TV last night that you was going to respect the wishes of the majority and put this on the ballot. I got a question, where'd you get that majority? Because I see a majority that says they don't want it on the ballot. Show of hands, everybody don't want it on the ballot? That's a pretty good majority, Commissioner, that don't want it on the ballot.
Well, there are a lot of other people that we've heard from as well.
But you can't count Facebook and a phone call. These is physical people that live in the county.
Not referring to Facebook.
Okay.
People that we've actually had personal contact with.
In the surrounding counties, as I said last meeting, there's not a single county around us that's under 300 feet. Gordon County is 1,000, Whitfield County is 600, Chattanooga, I looked today, is 500 feet. They all got the big restaurants. They all got what y'all professing that's going to come here if this passes. You talked about last meeting, you wanted to reduce government, you wanted to reduce the regulations, but yet you got a family here that's struggling with regulations trying to get a business open. So we're talking out of both sides of our mouth on trying to help a business get started. But in the state of Georgia, under the state of Georgia's website, I said this last time, under the official code of Georgia, current through the 2019 regular session of the Georgia General Assembly, under Alcoholic Beverages Prohibited Acts, it plainly says, no persons knowingly and intentionally may sell or offer to sell any distilled spirits in or within 100 yards of any church building or within 200 yards of any school building, education building, school grounds, or college campus. That's current through the end of the 2019 general session in the state of Georgia. So how can a county go less than the Georgia law?
Do you have the code section?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely, I got it. Absolutely.
Is that packaged sales versus...
No, sir, it's not packaged sales. It says any, and any means any. It says any distilled spirits in or within 100 yards. The word packaged sales is not on this right here.
Tony, are you sure that yards, not feet?
It says 100 yards.
We're talking feet.
200 yards from any school building.
That's 300 feet.
Let me say something, while he's looking at it, why would you want to do something with this young man's future?
Yeah, that's right.
Because that's what you're doing, bringing alcohol in. That's what you're doing. You're going to take away...
Just Jim, let him have the floor. You were looking somewhere.
I understand that other places has done it, but doesn't make it right.
What is that code section?
The code is Section 3-3-21. I can give you the whole deal. It's Georgia Official Code of Georgia, Title III, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter III, Regulation of Alcoholic Beverages Generally, Article II, Prohibited Acts, Section 3-3-21. And that Section A says, no person knowingly and intentionally may sell or offer to sell, and it says, any distilled spirits in or within 100 yards of any church building or within 200 yards of any school building, educational building, school grounds, or college campus.
Do you want me to respond?
Yes.
Okay. If you look under subsection B of the very ordinance that you're reading, nothing contained in this code section shall prohibit the licensing of the sale or distribution of alcoholic beverages by licensees for the retail sale of alcohol beverages for consumption on the premises only, who shall be subject to regulation as distances from churches, schools, and colleges by counties and municipalities. So with all due respect, the statute that you're reading, you read the part that doesn't necessarily apply.
I read the part that applies to distilled spirits. Under Section B of this I'm reading, replies refers to malt and wine.
Okay.
Because Section B starts out with, any wine or malt beverages within 100 yards of any school building, school ground, school campus. It doesn't say anything in Section B about...
Alcoholic beverages, if you read earlier in the statute, is defined by statute as being malt beverages, which is beer, wine, and distilled spirits that are collectively referred to and identified as alcoholic beverages.
Well, why is it separated in this as distilled spirit and malt?
I don't...
It says any...
I'm not in the legislature, I'm just telling you what the law is. You're incorrect in your statement that they're trying to limit it legally less than what the state of Georgia allows. That statement is incorrect.
So you're saying what I'm reading here is wrong?
I reckon so, because that subsection B is what I just read.
This is Section 3-3-21, we ain't getting to a subsection.
Yes, sir, it is. I'll be having to show it to you, it's subsection B, I'm not making it up.
I understand what you're saying, but it's a big dispute between what you're saying and what this actually says.
Okay. Well, there certainly are other cities that have done this.
Doesn't make it right.
That doesn't make it illegal.
And if nobody ever questions it, nobody ever knows what they're doing.
You asked me...
We got one here that's questioned.
You asked me, I'm not stating my opinion, you just made a statement that the law prohibits what they're seeking to do, and the bottom line is, the law does not prohibit that. State law does not prohibit it. Your interpretation, with all due respect...
I appreciate that.
But I'm not taking sides on the issue.
I understand.
I'm just trying to clarify that one issue for you.
I understand your position. And it amazes me, I'll say this and be done, that in the last 10 months of you as sole commissioner, this is the most important thing you can come up with and put on the ballot. That amazes me.
That's not the case, there's some other things tonight we're going to be talking about.
I understand that, but this is a pretty big thing. If we can get three people to say that Walker County ought to do with the economic development thing, can we get that on the ballot and let the citizens vote to do away with that?
Anything's an option.
Y'all heard that? If we can get three people to say we want to do away with the economic development that cost us thousands of dollars, that owns a lot of property in this county, that could be an option. Let's think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
My name's Michael Peardon, and I've been a resident here for close to 40 years. Is there any way we can state what businesses that are wanting this alcohol sales? We talked about the farmhouse restaurant, but we didn't hear the other two that... Can we publicly announce who the other two are?
I don't have their permission to do so, don't you think?
So they don't have to show up like anybody else, they can just call the commissioner and do what they want to do, and they don't have to come and stand before anybody, so they can just call you and do that. Since we're talking about the law, this is the law. You people are the law. Y'all do what you want to do, you know? The first meeting that was set, why didn't you put that on the ballot for the incorporated areas? Why wasn't that on the ballot?
For the incorporated areas?
Yes, sir.
We don't have that jurisdiction.
That voted through, did they not have to come to a meeting like this?
They had to go to their city council. They had to go to the city that enacted that, not the council.
So you're saying that that was a different government that made a ruling on that, is what you're saying?
That was a different government entity through any of those processes.
What are y'all taking as being bona fide, as people that can make these decisions in our county? What... You said you had some phone calls, because last night you was on TV saying that it's your ruling that the majority... Who is that majority with all these people standing here? And with all these petitions that was turned in, that there's 100 and... Now, this was right after the last meeting, there was 161 petitions here. Their names was not mentioned because it was illegal, they wasn't filled out right. But this was Perry David Lamb's, some people associated with Perry.
Hold on, hold on, he's got the floor, hold on, hold on.
I hope I'm not over speaking that, but I did see Lamb, but anyway, it's a good service. But anyway, these were attempts to say, hey, we don't want this in our county. These attempts were denied, there's 160 something names, they were denied. So my question to you, who is the bona fide people that you're talking about, the majority that you spoke about last night? Who are those people?
I timed out your time here, but I wanted, David, if you don't mind, to read. When you talk about the bona fide restaurant, in the language, I did want... That needs to be clarified, when the language says the distance from a bona fide eating establishment to a church, okay? So, David, if you would read that, because it's important for everybody to know what... It's not a bar, it's not a bona fide eating establishment. A tavern is not a bona fide eating establishment. Here's the legal description of what a bona fide eating establishment is that may help with some context of what the question asks.
Bona fide eating establishment means a public place selling prepared food for consumption to the public on the premises, containing a minimum of 1,200 square feet of heated space devoted to eating and food preparation, with a minimum of 25% of any such area to be devoted to kitchen and food preparation area, which derives at least 51% of its total annual gross sales from sale prepared foods.
Proceed, Mike.
Not talking about bona fide restaurants, I'm talking about bona fide people that you're calling up. On Facebook, a lot of people say, well, our voice is not equivalent, the people that are standing here is not equivalent. So what I'm addressing is, last night, the commissioner said that the majority of the folks want this on the ballot, so that's what he's going to do. Now, who's the majority? There's nobody standing there, I don't see anybody, I only seen two at the previous meeting that stood against it, or for it, rather. So who is that majority? That's the question I'm asking. That made your decision to put this on the ballot, who are those folks?
Even some of the ones that were here last meeting that were against it were asking why the citizens were not voting against this. Even though they were against it.
Did they come up here?
Yes.
Like we had to?
They wanted to know why they were not voting against it.
I didn't see them in the meeting.
They should have.
I only seen two. The newspaper only reported two from the ones that was here. Well, what was the head count? Is it bigger than what you got here? These folks don't want it on the ballot, and y'all know that. You know that. And you're going and saying the majority, you're copping out and saying that the majority of people want this. That was your statement. And I'm saying to you, and I think most of the folks here are saying that we need to be counted, not people that call you on the phone. There wasn't this many people at the last meeting. There wasn't this many people at the last meeting.
That's the best way to bring clarification to it, is let the voters make that decision, and then we know exactly where the majority is.
Yeah, that's a good way to stop talks, though. We had talks before. We was negotiating before. And by you putting it on the ballot, negotiations stopped. So who are those folks? And I'll be done. How many?
I'll address that. I mean, from the phone calls that I have received from people, you would think by what I see, and I know a large number of people that are in this room that are opposed and are clearly going to vote no to this. If the will of this room is reflected in that referendum, there should be an overwhelming defeat of this referendum. The phone calls that I've received over the last couple of weeks have been about, you know, there's been plenty of people, and some of you in here have called as well, that I've talked to personally. The people that, the feedback that I'm getting is feedback that says, why would you back down from what you know is good for business? You're caving in to the will of a few people that'll come and cut up in a meeting. And I'm saying to them-
Hold on, we're gonna keep order. Listen up, please.
And I'm saying back to them that these are my friends that you're talking about. They are not in here for that purpose. And I'm talking about you are in here to voice an honest heartfelt opinion. And then they say, I want to voice my heartfelt opinion too. And I don't get to make the decision of what goes on a referendum, but I will tell you that it was, I did suggest or agree with the commissioner that the just, the only just way, when you have good people with different opinions, and I'm talking about good and the hard people. The people that want this reduction are trying to free up real estate for future possibilities of full-service restaurants. And I'm not, I wouldn't ask anyone to agree with that. I'm sharing feedback. That's all that I'm doing here. The feedback is, and particularly on the north end of the county, where there is great opportunity for its economic expansion, they're saying the real estate opportunities, when you make the distance greater, the greater the distance, the less places that are available in commercial areas, the less places are available for establishment of full-service restaurants. And you know what I mean by that. I'm not gonna call the brand names of the restaurants, but you know them because you go to them in Catoosa County right now, in Hamilton County.
Which is one hundred feet five hundred.
The ones we all go to. Yes, sir, Tony. I understand. You're right about that. And they have an interstate, and we don't. So all I'm saying is, there, maybe we can be respectful to those that have the other view as, for my part, I'm requiring them to be respectful of us as church-going people. So that's the only thing. I just wanted to point that out of what the other side of this is saying. And I think, for my own personal opinion, the decision to put it to a referendum will clearly, in the end, demonstrate the will of the voters in Walker County. And it's kind of hard in our democracy, or our representative republic, it's kind of hard to say, we don't want the people to voice their opinion. I mean-
It's not a democracy. If it was a democracy, then the voices would have been heard to start with. If we can't be heard, then why do we even come down here? If you're gonna do whatever you want to do, whether we come down here and visit this meeting or not, and you're gonna take ghost phone calls that people you don't even know live in this county, you don't know who you're talking to. You're saying that those people that call in are more important than the people standing right here in front of you.
I'm certainly not saying-
As taking, as calling us down to have a meeting for an agenda for the citizens of Walker County to come down here and talk to you about how we feel. What is the sense in coming down here? If you're gonna take a few phone calls from a few cowards that won't show their face, you got people showing their face. So if that's the way you want to run your government, that's not a democracy, because the majority is here. We don't know who you talk to on the phone.
My name is Sam Barrett. Most everybody knows me here. I want to ask one real blunt question, to be real simple. Who has the final say-so, who to put it on a referendum ballot or not?
Well, at this time, that would be me.
Okay, I'm asking you to stop and don't go any further with it. Because of one restaurant that called, hundreds of people are asking you not to, not put it on the referendum ballot. There's no need to go any further, because the majority doesn't want it. So I'm asking you to man up and make the decision not to do it. We're depending on you. We voted you in, we're depending on you. Thank you.
My name's Todd Noblet. As I stated at the last meeting, I oppose the change. As I've sat here, the question that came to my mind is, is it really worth the divisiveness that this is gonna cause and is causing for us to have this put on the ballot? That's a big deal. Our county needs unity. And in a time when we need unity, what appears to be happening is we have a division. That division is not necessary. All we have to do is leave it where it's at, and it's no change. In life, there are things that come up, and we have to make decisions. And I understand, there's a lot of people that are on- I'm not one that would say this is the majority. I think that if we have a vote, that probably there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna not come to a meeting like this that will support the change. However, these folks in here aren't gonna forget that this was put on the ballot. And they aren't gonna forget the battle that they're gonna go through in the next couple of months to try to defend and keep the change, keep the ordinance where it was at. So all of a sudden, Walker County is losing some of the unity that we've had over some issue that we don't even have to, which has been resolved for years. So all I'm saying is, please reconsider putting it on the ballot. And let's mend fences, and let's all live in Walker County like we should. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Haney. I'm just an ordinary guy. I have two teenage boys, my five-year-old daughter. And there was a time in my life that I was nothing but a sorry drunk. And I've sat and watched this county roll back the tide. I remember in this county when you could not buy alcohol on Sunday. Yet today, you can. And I know that was not under you. And I have sang praise to what you've done for our county with the roads and everything else. I think very highly of you, till I hear about this right here. And the only question that comes to my mind is, why are we even having this discussion? What happened to what's right and what's best? Why aren't we having a discussion on extending the distances to provide sanctity to our families and our churches? Instead, we're trying to allow more of this into our county. And to me, that does not make sense. I've been on both sides of the fence. I am a God-fearing man. But there was a time in my life that I was nothing but a sorry drunk. And the fact that we're even having this discussion makes me sick to my stomach. And I'm losing all respect that I have gained for you. Thank you.
My name's Robert Blakemore. I stand against this. You know, we got hard-working men. How long have y'all been held up? Four or five months? How much money y'all lost? These restaurants, these big chains, is what we're trying to attract. They got the money to come down here and pay you and stand before you. They can send a representative and ask for a variance. They're no better than these taxpaying citizens that live right here in Walker County. When we do this, they can just apply for alcohol license. They don't have to send nobody down there. They don't live in our county. They don't care about this county. I ask that you seriously consider not doing this. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Jeff Brown with Valleyview Baptist Church. Mr. Whitfield, I supported you. I voted for you. And I don't know if you remember this, but not too long ago, we were in the Hardee's line. You were in front of me, and I defended you. There was a man in front of me that was getting on you about taxes. And I said, well, you had to, you know? And I defended you at that point. So I've been a supporter of yours for quite a while. I can't support this, but let me just state this real quick, okay? And I'll be done. I didn't have a speech planned or anything like that. But gentlemen was talking about phone calls. Phone calls. When somebody dies, one, two in the morning, I get phone calls. Alcohol-related. I've been at four funerals, performed three of them myself, that were alcohol-related. And I'm the one that has to put together the family. I'm the one that's gotta put the pieces back together for the family. I'm the one that's gotta stand over the daughter on life support. I've got a man here tonight, his daughter, substance abuse. I was over her on life support at the hospital with the family. Her kid's standing there, and her dying. The pastors are the ones that have to answer that, not the commissioners. They don't call the commissioner when their kid's in the hospital and they've been in a wreck, or when they're dead. Here's what I ask of you is this. My church is a sanctuary, okay? I understand. I get your point. Hey, y'all go to Fort Oathor if you need an applebee's. I totally get that point. Okay, sir, I understand what you're saying. But here's my point going along with that, is that the church is a sanctuary for me. It's a place I can go and not have to look left, not have to look right, not have to look forward, not have to look back, and have alcohol. I can't buy my gas without looking at alcohol. I can't take my wife to a nice restaurant for Valentine's Day. Ninety-five percent of them serve alcohol. But what I can do is go to a public place, my local church, and not have to worry about alcohol. That's all I'm asking for from you guys is, listen, think about the church people. Think about the one sanctuary that we've got left. And that's my church, that we don't have to look outside a few feet away and see alcohol. Just please consider that.
Good evening. Mr. Whitfield, my name is David Myers, Jr. I'm from Chicago, Georgia. Okay, my church is Frisheer Baptist Church, right across from the Millen pads. And my understanding that the Millen pads also wants to get licensed to sell alcohol. Now, I was out there in the world too. I did it all too. So when I, when I got, went to God, and he helped me to get in the church, and he enabled me to forget about some of the things that I used to do. Now, when I come out, when we come out of the church, and then you got people that's coming out of the, what, out of the restaurant or whatever it is, and they're intoxicated or whatever it is. Now, I see it, the kids see it, everybody that come out of church, they see it. You're coming out. So, I mean, it's a bad impression on the church to know you got alcohol right across the road, because it's not even, it's not even two hundred, two hundred feet if you go property, property to property. So I'm asking also to not to let the alcohol, to let the alcohol come in, come into the restaurants. I mean, I appreciate myself, and which we are, we're a small congregation, and which, it don't matter whether it's just one or two, it still counts. So if you would do like some of the other brothers, and I already gonna say it, if you take that into consideration to not even put it on the ballot, I think it'd be well appreciated. So thank you.
Just very quickly, my name is John Alverson. I pastor the Linwood Baptist Church. Been my privilege for the past seven years nearly to do that. I can't say how accurate this is, but when I first went there, I did the history of the church and the history of the community. And I looked into it from several different sources, resources. And it's my understanding, forty or fifty years ago, that was its own community, its own city. It's my understanding, they made some decisions as the city, and one of which was to bring in alcohol. When I say the name Linwood Baptist Church, there's probably not many people in this room who doesn't know what the word Linwood and the community of Linwood is like today. Here we are several decades later, and if the research I've done is accurate, we can drive a mile over this direction, and we will see what the results of easier access to what, to what I believe can be clearly stated on the authority of God is not right. And we can see what it has done to a community. And like the gentleman I heard a little while ago, I don't remember who it was, there's not a week that goes by that I don't have three to five calls or door knocks of people who are coming to us asking for help in a variety of different ways. And we do what we can to help them. We do what we can to try to make an impact in their lives. And what I'm afraid of here is this is going to cause our jobs to even be more difficult in this. And I'm not fully understanding why that we have to put something on the ballot to test the waters of what I think I could prove clearly is not right. And as Pastor Brown said just a few moments ago, that I don't know if you have or not, maybe you have, but I have stood over the caskets and tried to comfort a family who loved one died walking home after drinking at an establishment here in town. And that's difficult to do. It's very difficult to do. I don't know that there's one person here, there may be folks here that may have a drink, you may do it socially, you may do it continually. I don't know. That's between those individuals and God. And I'm not, I'm not here to beat any of that down. But I don't believe that there's one person who can say and give one good thing that has ever come from drinking beer, alcohol, or anything other than money. And I don't know that's good necessarily, but not one good thing. I've heard a lot of wonderful speeches through the years of people who stand up after receiving a reward, award of some type. And they say, I want to thank my mom, I want to thank my dad, I want to thank my wife, I want to thank this, I want to thank that. But I've never one time heard somebody stand up on a world stage, a national stage, a state stage, a county stage, and say, I want to thank Anheuser-Busch for allowing me to be able to receive this award. I would strongly recommend, and exhort, encourage, if you would. I don't believe I put this on the ballot. I would really encourage you and very much appreciate it. And a great deal of respect would be, would be added from me to you and everybody else involved here if we would avoid going down that road. Hey, God bless y'all. Thank you for your time.
My name's Chris O'Neil. I'm pastor of Bethany Baptist Church. And I actually came, and I appreciate you, you've both met with me and talked with me, and I appreciate that. And actually, I am one of those that asked you to at least, I thought we had a loss. I thought you was gonna be sad, and I said, please, at least let us vote on it or something. And I said, "Please, at least let us vote on it or something." Now, I feel like there is a possibility we might be able to sway you not to even put it on the ballot, and that's where I stand on it at this time. When I was ten years old, God convicted my heart, and I came to the realization that I was a sinner. And I asked Jesus Christ to come into my life in my bedroom out on Garris Chapel Road. Ever since that moment, God's made a difference in my life, and my Bible has been my guideline. There's some things in life that we say, "You know what? I need to pray about this thing." There are things that we can ask questions in our life and say, "Well, I can go to God's Word and find the absolute answer in it." During my time in the recovery program, I studied extensively in God's Word on what does it say about alcohol. But I got people throwing my face, "Bible says thou shall not drink." Guess what? It don't. It does not say thou shall not drink in those particular words. But there are 132 verses in the Bible that speaks to the negativity of alcohol. There are two verses in God's Word that speaks positively about alcohol. For medicinal purposes, somebody's about to die to ease them all into it. There's some things we just ain't gotta pray about. Both, Mr. Wardlaw, I think you met me in the back the last time we were here and expressed to me your Christian faith, and I think you said you went to church here next door. Shannon, you've been vocal about yours, and I've known you most of our lives. We've been together. And again, I voted for you and I support you, and I'm still your friend. We'll go eat lunch sometime after this is over. But there's just some things we ain't gotta pray about. God's Word, God's will will never contradict God's Word. That's from the White House to the county house. It'll never contradict God's Word. And if you, and I address anybody on your leadership team, if you can go back to the time in your life where you accepted Christ as your personal Savior, and I hope you have, and it don't matter if you could be a member of every church in the county, be baptized and every mud puddle, every tadpole knows your name, but unless you've addressed that in your life, the Bible is your guide. And I would challenge you tonight to pray God's leadership, but we really don't even have to pray on whether or not we should or shouldn't. It's a no-brainer. God's Word's against it. There's this thing of, "Well, it's all about prosperity and all this." I know this is gonna shock most of y'all, but I know about all the restaurants in this county. Frequent most of them. Half the other counties. I go by Greg's a lot. I eat breakfast there a lot. They don't serve alcohol, yet the parking lot's full most of the time. I used to go to Farmhouse, or the Five Point Farmhouse. I frequented there a lot of times, especially when it was Millen Patch. It was fairly full. Didn't serve alcohol. What I'm saying is there's a lot of places that are successful, don't sell alcohol. I talked to a restaurant owner in Fort Oathorpe. I won't call his names because I don't have his permission to, but he made the statement. He said, "I'd like to build a restaurant in Lafayette, but the numbers don't support it." It's not about bringing a big-name restaurant in here that's gonna all of a sudden be the golden goose. Just don't support it. And I know y'all probably know all about that way better than I do, but I drive up down 27 all the time. There's two things that I've noticed. There's a lot of restaurants that do a fine business and don't serve alcohol, and I can't tell you how many spots I've picked out personally that they could build a restaurant, wouldn't even affect the church. As Brother Brown, I believe, put it, "That's our sanctuary." I don't like going into restaurants to serve it, but I don't go in there and dictate to them what they do. I don't like going in convenience stores and buying my gas, but I don't know of one that you can't. But I don't go in there and dictate what they do. And I don't dictate what they have to do around their stores. I'm asking you as a pastor, I don't want it at my front door. I mean, with all the compassion I can muster, I don't want it even close to me. I love you guys. I'll do anything I can for you, but I'm asking you, Shannon, please, don't put it on the ballot. And I appreciate your time.
Who else? I want to say that we didn't give anybody an opportunity. Yes, sir, come on in.
Did I say something? Well, just one quick question I have about how you're gonna put it on the ballot.
Give me just a second.
Mike Brown, and I live in Walker County in Flintstone. And on the way you had it written there, you said, if I understood it correctly, it said, "From the door."
That's correct.
Just the one door?
The front door.
The two front doors? From door?
Excuse me, I'm gonna correct myself. The front door.
Well, it'd be from the two front doors. From the door of the establishment to the front door of the church? Is that the way it is? When you say "from the door," I mean, what door?
Let me read it again. It says, "Shall the governing authority of Walker County reduce the distance requirement from the front door of a bona fide eating establishment as defined in Chapter Six of the Walker County Code of Ordinances from 300 feet to 150 feet for on-premise consumptions of malt beverages, wines, distilled spirits in the unincorporated areas of Walker County?"
Okay, that, "from the front door," to where?
To the front door of the church.
Shouldn't that be on the list that way in the ballot?
The regulation that's there now, and when you measure 300 feet, it's from the front door.
Front door to front door. Okay, and I wanna say too, I am totally against it, but I just don't believe God expects us to consume it. I've never seen anything good that ever come out of it. And I'm just a lay member, but I do love the Lord. And I can't see how Christian people that says they're Christian can vote for it. I really just don't understand. I've never been able to understand that. And I've had friends that would vote for things that is totally contradictory to the Bible. And if you study the Bible, I mean, if you're really a studier of the Bible, you'll find God. There's just too many things in there that God is against. We spoke so far with Christians, there's four nowadays. You know, we've slipped quite a bit. But I just ask that you pray about it. I mean, if you really pray, if you're a praying man, and most people are not, most politicians are not, but I ask that you really pray about it and ask God to give you guidance in what you need to do.
I'm Rick Talan. I'm a local resident taxpayer. In fact, my church building last year paid several thousand dollars in taxes because the building is in such a state of disrepair that we cannot conduct services until the city of Lafayette will give us an occupation permit. I can understand the pastor of Linwood Baptist Church, because the church building that my wife and I bought is on Flora Street up on top of the hill, the old Pentecostal church building. My friends, I have pastored all over the United States in some of the worst places and evangelized in some of the worst places in America. And the one thing that's consistent is access to alcohol and drugs. And if you make access to alcohol easier, you're making access to drugs easier. Shannon, I speak to you as a friend. I supported you. I argued with a lot of people that said that they would rather vote for somebody else. But in this, my friend, we cannot agree. This is not for the betterment of this county. This is for the detriment of this county. The other thing is that, I don't know how true this is, so I'll just address this here. But I was told that by one person, that the people who live inside the city limits of the city of Rossville and Lafayette will not be able to vote on this county ordinance. Is that true?
That's false.
That's false. Okay, well, I'm glad we got that straightened out, because I plan on voting against it.
Yeah, there was a misprint in the Jacob Times paper that stated what you're referring to. So that was false. We contacted them and had them to correct that. This would be for everyone in Walker County, regardless if they lived in the city or if they lived in the unincorporated, it would be on the ballot.
All you have to do is look at any city that has made, or any community that has made access to alcohol easier, and you will see the detrimental effect that it has. Go to Catoosa County. You're not gonna build within 300 feet of a church. Look at the regulations in all the adjacent counties. What you're talking about is doing away with what these other counties are still holding true to, and yet they've got all these restaurants. The reason why was addressed just a minute ago. They have the economic base to be able to support higher-value restaurants. Walker County does not have the economic base. It is a poor county, whether we want to admit it or not. It is a poor county. We're not a wealthy county. Catoosa County is wealthy. Gordon County, Floyd County, they're wealthy. You'll see those larger restaurants. You'll see all that economic development. But we won't have it here until things happen here to build Walker County so that the people have the funds to be able to spend in those restaurants. So if you go ahead with this, which you have the authority to do, I believe it's gonna be not only a detriment to this county, but I believe it's gonna be a black flag waving over your candidacy to be the chairman of the new county commission. We need a county commission. I'm glad we're going to it. And the reason why is because I have said it, and I don't mean it disrespectfully, but it's a matter of just the way it is. You are an elected dictator. You can sign that piece of paper and you can do anything you want to and not care whether the people like it. You have that authority under the current government. But come January 1st, we're gonna have a commission of people. We're gonna have representation in government. There's no reason to push this through right now. There must be some behind-the-scenes reason for pushing this through right now. I have been around enough politicians in my lifetime to see political corruption, and it smells. It always smells like money. And this smells like money.
Rick, hold on just a second. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I may be wrong, so correct me if I'm wrong. But wasn't you one of the ones here last time that asked why we were not voting on this?
I did.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Okay, who's next?
I'm gonna vote for it.
Who's next? Because there are several of you here that have asked that question, and I appreciate Brother Chris, you know, telling y'all that he was one of those, and I respect you for that. Yes, sir, come on in.
My name's Brandon Redden. I'm the assistant pastor of Vista Baptist Church in Rossville. And I grew up in a drunkard's home and knew how it was not to be allowed to go out at your house on Friday or Saturday night, because your mom won't let you go outside because all the drunkers at your house. And I'm glad that God saved me at age of 16. But you know, I've pastored teenagers for the last 20 years. And I wonder what message we're sending to our teenagers by doing things like this. You know, we live in a day-and-hour where people don't respect churches like they used to anyway. We got security cameras around churches because we gotta protect the church, as was said. I grew up in a church in a little small community where the doors are always open. People come in and pray. And now we gotta worry about security cameras. We gotta worry about everything going on because people don't worry about the church no more. People don't care about God. People don't care about anything about God. And my question is, what are we sending to our teenagers? I have pastored teenagers for 20 years, and I've seen teenagers influenced by alcohol, by drugs. And you know what? What happens is, is we kinda dumb it down and say, "It's okay. It's okay." But you know, but then all of a sudden, you see teenagers end up being 20 and 25 and 30 years old, and they look back and say, "What did I do in my life?" And you know, just like these other pastors have said, the church is a sanctuary. I work at a church to where we get probably 20 door knocks on that church every day of people that come to that church that are probably drunk. I mean, just high. And you know, we try to love on them. We try to care for them. We have a food bank. We give them food. But may I say this, if we can show them the love of Christ, but at the same time, boy, our generation, this next generation, needs to know that there's some people that stand up for what's truth. And we sure don't need this nonsense around churches, I'm telling you. We don't need this around churches. We need to take a stand and say, "Hey, they're still a sanctuary." Young people still need to know there's a place that loves them, and they shouldn't have to worry about alcohol running around everywhere. Amen? Thank you.
Commissioner Whitfield and citizens of Walker County, Georgia, I've been here before. I've been here probably about the last three meetings at this podium to speak. I'm proud of the American system, and I'm proud of America. And my pride goes beyond Walker County, Georgia, but my concern goes beyond issue of alcohol. Political corruption was mentioned just a couple of minutes ago. Generally, I've been a negative person a great part of my life and a good bit of my early years, and I have adjusted and tried to learn to have a positive attitude, a good attitude toward my community, toward America. But I want to tell you, this political corruption, much of it begins at the ballot box. If you will just take a few minutes of memory, back over the last several years, Tennessee, the state of Tennessee had early voting much before, long before, Georgia ever brought early voting, an opportunity to everyone. We had elections where people were standing in line. At 7:00, they came and stood in line a mile or two mile long to vote. The voting continued on up to 10, the polls were open to 10 or 11 o'clock, only to accommodate those folks that came in late. I myself, and I'm going to admit, that I was denied, I feel like I was denied the opportunity to vote. Right down here at Wilson Fire Hall, and I was registered to vote there. This was in the Bush-Gore election. When was that? 1980? The Bush-Gore election. How close was that election? I still, I still really don't believe that an election can be that close. But I went down there, a registered voter, at 6:30 in the evening, and they went through a list over there, the poll people, and said, "We don't see your name in here anywhere. You must have been moved, but we don't know where." And I checked with the registrar's office here. She said, "We sent you a message. We sent you a card stating that you was being changed. We sent it to your wife." I said, "I never received one with my name on it." She said, "Well, we sent it to your wife." But I'm just stating that we have problems that need correction in this country. In order to, right now, we have an issue with the voting machines. The voting machines didn't work. Do you remember the fiasco when we first started using machines? And some say, "Well, I pressed, I was voting for the amendment, or for the person or whoever it was, and it checked no in my machine." Our system really is dangerous and unreliable. Now, I'm just gonna tell you, unless we fix that, we're doing a dangerous thing, bringing anything to the ballot box. And really, I guess that's all I need to say.
My name's Lee Frye. I used to go to school with you, the other, forgot her name because it's been so long. I went to Gordon Lee. Great school, great school. As a teenager, and now I'm able to vote because I'm 18, because you know, that's what you get to do, which I'm so excited for. I'm actually studying history right now and studying government, and I was like thinking to myself, when I was in high school and since I'm in college now, I have to deal with those things of now vaping, smoking, drugs, alcohol. I even myself gave into the addiction, but I got out of it because I had the willpower. So I really think, from a teenager, I know there's a lot of old people and, you know, I'm just saying, from an up-and-coming generation, from me to you, don't put it on the ballot. Just leave it that where it is. I thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me come up here. I'm so excited to see all the government. I love it. Thank you.
Just some words of advice, you're more than welcome to come anytime, and you can call me old, but you're taking a lot of risks to call a lot of these people old, and you sit down and turn your back to them. But that's all that fun, appreciate you. It takes a lot for a man of your young age to come up and speak in front of a large group. We appreciate you doing that. Yes, sir. Mr. Sprigby. Yes, come on up, sir.
My name is James Sprigby, and I too voted for Mr. Whitfield, near his dad and mom way back when. I'm a minister of the gospel, just celebrated 56 years, July the 28th. Been married to my sweet wife for, since 1960, 1958, and 61 years now. God called me to preach as a 23-year-old. I tell these, I also minister down here in Walker County Jail, I come down twice a month on the second, fourth Thursday night. One thing I usually tell these folks, I preach to the women one month, the men the next month, so forth, rotate. One thing I think I usually, I try to tell them, all the inmates, every time, every service, and that is, enough the grace of God be right with you. Right here behind bars. I went to Gordon Lee High School, graduated in 1959. I was saved right over here at Naomi Baptist Church Pastor Sam Marshall. Dad moved us away from Naomi, I was a 10-year-old boy. Dad moved us back to Chickamauga, near where I was born. And my high school years, I wasted and sinned. But the daddy was precious, wonderful people, raised five boys and five girls. They didn't take us to church, they failed us there. I love them, I thank God for them. But here's the thing, being a pastor, down through the years, I remember one particular night, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, got a phone call, hospital down in Somerville, Georgia. And the nurse asked me, said, are you Pastor James Sprigby? Yes. Do you know, and she named two young people, two young teenage boys, 18, 17, 18-year-olds. Long story short, they were involved in a car wreck that night. And she said, do you know, name one of them's mom and dad? I said, yes, they're neighbors, they live right across the road, a steep street. Well, you need to get them down here soon as possible. I try to be very brief about this story because here's the bottom line. These two young men, members of our church at Grace Baptist St. Vernicle, which were organized and built in 1968, by the way, was a result of a split in another church, and I won't name it. It split because God laid on my heart, started a bus ministry. Had a deacon said, preacher, all you're going to get on that bus is a bunch of snotty-nosed kids. You see, the thing was, I was one of them snotty-nosed kids, 10-year-old kids, and Pastor Sam Marshall would come up to our house, shine in and pick us up, some of us kids, and take us to church. And, but anyhow, we were pastors at Grace Baptist St. Vernicle at the time. Bottom line was, long story short, I keep saying that, but one of the boys was dead. The other boy was at Erlanger Hospital. The nurse couldn't tell me, I guess HIPAA laws, so of course she couldn't tell me that one of them was dead. She wanted me to get her, get the boy's parents down there. And she only mentioned this one particular couple. And I thought, well, if he's, if one of them's at Erlanger, he's probably in the worst shape, so that's why they're, that, these parents. And I found out soon to go down there to the hospital. One of them was killed instantly in that crash. Just a few months prior to that, one of the boys had just gotten out of the service. He bought a little Volkswagen, on the, on the front, he had the, y'all seen the tag? The devil made me do it. Let me all remember that tag. I saw that, and the young man later said something to my son, which they're about the same age, Jimmy. I said, what did your daddy think about my tag? He said, well, I don't know. But anyhow, when I went down there, after going to the hospital and taking this precious couple, actually, I followed them because they were my neighbor, they drove. This is the one that whose son was killed in the crash. And we went down there, and I never will forget that night. That nurse took the young man's mother's hands in hers, and she said, honey, I'm sorry to tell you this, but your son didn't make it. 17 years old, I believe, if my memory serves me right. And I said, can we go back and see his, seek it, see his body? She agreed. We went back, there he lay on that gurney, gurney with some, some of the broken glass and all, smell of alcohol. And later on, I saw the car, a couple of days later. In fact, it's that night, I drove by the garage down there, filling station where the car was, and there's that Volkswagen head-on collision with, I think another car's been years ago, but there's that tag on it. The devil made me do it. And my brother-in-law died at 51 years old, cirrhosis liver, 51. The word of God is very clear about alcohol. Look not on the wine when it move itself or write in the cup and so forth. I've seen many, many things like that. And there's so much lack of respect for the house of God anymore, for pastors, for churches. And I know that there's that thing called money. That's what a lot of people got their mind on is money. They don't care about the lives of these young people, these kids, these pastors that have gone through the same things that I have, and some of you other haven't even spoke yet. Don't know what I'm talking about. And I didn't plan to speak tonight at all, but God moved on my heart. I'd be, I'd be ashamed if I didn't speak up. Get back to Gordon Lee, and I'll, I'll bring it to a close. I remember in the 10th grade, like I said, my dad moved us away from Naomi, back to Chickamauga, went on to Pond Springs Elementary, Gordon Lee, later, four years at Gordon Lee. And those 10 years between my salvation experience at Naomi Baptist and high school, I didn't grow an inch in the grace of God, to measure inches. And I wouldn't live for the Lord. I've heard different ones talk, that went to high school with me, and they've heard later I was called a preacher, so forth. They said, if you, if I'd have thought, if I'd have heard Paul O'Neill or James Sprigby going to be called a preacher, I wouldn't have believed it. And so, I remember one day, we were in 10th grade, sophomore class, that's biology class, opened up my book, textbook. Lo and behold, here's a picture of where we came from. It's in a monkey, some kind of amoeba cell floated up out of the ocean, you know? Entirely contrary to the word of God, the Bible, which I've been preaching 56 years. I would stand on the word of God if it hairless the devil. I preach, I preach against sin, although I have committed sin, like I said a moment ago. I didn't live for God. I can only remember that one time in high school at Gordon Lee. And I'm ashamed, but thank God he's given me opportunity to testify this fact. Thank God, people were praying for me. I raised my hand, Ms. Esther, the biology teacher said, yes, James? I said, Ms. Esther, this is not what the Bible teaches. Showed a picture of that monkey, and where we came from, all this stuff. Well, bottom line is, I did not live for God my whole high school career. Georgia and I got married actually going into our senior year in high school. We thought we couldn't wait till we got out of high school. It's lasted 61 years now, so God done a good job for me. I failed him a lot of ways, Commissioner. He's never failed me. Okay. Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. At 20 years old, Georgia started going to church at Robertsville Baptist Church Pastor Lord Guffey. Her professor, little friend, Judy McCallister, was a piano player over there. That church started praying for me. Shield Baptist Church started praying for me, other churches, praying for this 19, 20-year-old young man. Got a precious little daughter and a son on the way. Georgia was pregnant with Jimmy, working second shift in that bleachers over there. And here I am, living like a fool. Drinking, yes. Never got on drugs, thank God. Never got on tobacco, thank God. But I did drink. And one night, I sat on the side of my bed, with my gun in my hand, a .22 pistol, fully loaded, but it wouldn't have taken but one hollow point of those bullets to blow what few little brains I had out. But here she is over there, working second shift, and I'm living like a fool, and I felt like I wasn't fit to live, wasn't fit to die, and here I am, facing, just about ready to pull the trigger and kill myself. If I'd have killed myself, oh yeah, I'd have went to heaven. I believe that Jesus, when he told Nicodemus, you must be born again, he didn't say you must be born again and again and again. One time I was born in my mother's room, one time I was saved by the grace of God, amen? But God didn't let me pull the trigger, he had a job for me to do. If I'd have pulled the trigger, I'd never got to see my son Jimmy in this life. He just turned 58 years old, June the 30th. On my 80th birthday, January the 9th, last month, Brother David, God let me, and Jimmy and Cheryl do a trio recording, 13 songs. What kind of song, preacher? Gospel, of course. I can't wait to get the finished product. My princess, my precious Cheryl, and Jimmy, been telling for quite a while, I want y'all to settle down, slow down, let Papa slow down, we need to have, do a recording, I'm getting old. So my 80th birthday, January the 9th, last year, we did it. What am I saying all that for? I'm saying to you that I've never seen nothing but bad come out of alcohol. Thank God, the Lord's shame in life. I failed him, yes. Am I a perfect man? No. I've got a perfect Savior, though. Thank you for your time, thank you, Commissioner.
Gentlemen and citizens of Walker County, my name is Tony Vona, pastor of Shield Baptist Church, right next to Jack's. To him that knoweth to do good, and doeth not to him it is sin. And I say that only for the reason that you did open in prayer. And so therefore, when you did that, you allowed the Holy Spirit to enter this place and to, you know, do what he's going to do, and I'm sure he's going to do it. Statistical analysis dictates, okay, dictates that when a company, a firm, especially a restaurant, comes into a lower income area, such as Walker County, that the purpose of coming into a county is really not to dispense services and whatnot, rather, it is as a tax write-off because they know that that business is not going to succeed as well as some of you think it may. You see, it's a smokescreen in a sense, in our society, and just like many of those other areas that these restaurants have gone in, and yet they don't do as well as other restaurants, for the simple reason is affordability. Now, why do they go in there? For the simple reason that these individuals that are at the higher echelons of our society use it as a tax write-off, you see? So what is going on exactly? It's all about money. That's all it's about. Not only is it only about money, but it's also about peddling something that we all know is inherently wrong, and that is alcohol. Now, I don't care what individuals do in their own homes and things like that, doesn't mean anything to me. I mean, I, I do care in a sense. But the point of the matter is, is that really, a couple of drinks, a couple of shots, is going to just open up the floodgates to Walker County of all this new revenue and everything else? I don't think so. No, I don't think so. The only thing that a, a couple of shots, or maybe an extra beer with your friends have ever done, is emptied the pockets of moms and dads that need to go home and feed their families. So what happens? A wreck happens. What happens? Something, other tragedy happens. What happens? All of a sudden, Walker County is now funding insurances, funding other things to help those victims, and I do call them victims. And so where's the revenue come from then? You see what's going on here? It's all about money. And so, gentlemen, I know you understand what I'm talking about. I, I really do. You're very highly intelligent, you're educated, and that's wonderful and everything. But Walker County does not want this. Walker County does not even want it on the ballot box. You know, it took me seven years, it took me seven years to become a citizen of the United States of America. Seven years. Speaking five languages, a master's degree, a bachelor's degree and everything, but I still had to wait seven years. And when I first moved to Walker County, back in 95, 96, I couldn't believe what I walked into. I stepped out of a socialist country where alcohol and drugs and everything was prevalent, dictated by a few individuals, I may add, from Canada to here, and I thought, what a beautiful place, what an amazing, what these people are incredible, they love the Lord, I thought I was in heaven. And I can't believe, brother, that we're standing tonight in 2020, having to argue or having to defend what is something that shouldn't even be on the ballot, that shouldn't be in our forethoughts, shouldn't be even in our hearts. I appreciate that, but all praise and glory goes to the Lord. We shouldn't even have to be having this discussion because of a few individuals that think that they're going to get financially advanced by all this. Now, if it does come to a vote, which I'm assuming it is, although it shouldn't even be on the ballot, I will say this, where does it stop? You want to benefit the community, you want to benefit Walker County, let's start off with the drink, fine. But now, all of a sudden, someone wants a cat house. Sure. Now, all of a sudden, someone wants a peep show. Now, all of a sudden, the prostitution down the road, and we all know this. You see, it's a snowball effect. Why? Because I've seen it happen firsthand in the communities that I've lived in, and it has benefited no one but those on the upper level. And that's it. Really consider what's going on here, sir. And I know you are. And I know you're in a situation where, you know, you have to pacify certain individuals and certain constituents and all that. But you did open up in prayer. You did open up in prayer. And I don't believe for a minute that the good Lord would ever condone any of this. Any of this. I want to thank you for your time, and I know that you've got a lot of decisions to make, and I'll be praying for you, and I'm praying for Walker County. And you know what? The Lord Jesus Christ has got to get the honor and the glory with whatever happens. And I believe that in the time in which that we're living, I believe in the time that which we're living, we can send a message to other communities and to other areas that Walker County still is a sanctuary like it was back in 97.
Been in the county for quite a few years, man of faith. And I know what happened the last time we had the beer situation on the ballot. There weren't enough Christians to voted, to vote it down. And that's where it starts, folks, that's Christians. But problem is, when you put something on the ballot- But problem is, when you put something on the ballot, a lot of people vote for it, have no idea what you're voting for. So that's why I ask of you, and I appreciate the work you're doing, so don't let it happen. Because God will bless you. He blesses those that blesses him. And so I appreciate you and what you've done to our county, and I really do. But really, really talk to God about it.
My name is Joseph Smith. I go to Richmond High School. And I agree full-heartedly with the restrictions with church and the school have to keep it at three hundred. I think it should be more. But one of the things that I have been thinking a lot on since the past meeting I've been to was the danger of selling alcohol across from schools and churches. Because what I think is, I imagine someone who's going through some rough times tries to draw out, draw, I mean, like drown it all away with alcohol, and they get drunk. And they drive up into a parking lot. And all I can imagine is them hitting either one of my friends or one of my family members and them dying from that. And I don't want that to happen to them. I don't want that to happen to my mom, my dad, my sister, anyone. Because I know that that'll just cause grief to me. I just don't want that to happen. I mean, my pastor is right here. I don't want that to happen to him. I don't want it to happen to my family here. I don't want it to happen to anyone, because it's not good. Like, like everyone else has said, alcohol hasn't brought any good to anyone. It's brought grief and sorrow to people, from people I know. Even people at school who, I'm the person who people come to talk to if they're feeling bad, because I can try to give them advice to help them. And they tell me, from multiple people I hear all the time, that they try to draw, like drown out, like their parents arguing, and like then have them go through a breakup and then drink it all away. I'm telling them, "That's not the answer. The answer is go to God. Ask for forgiveness and ask for salvation, because that's the only way you're gonna get, like get to feel better. Because you can't feel it any other better way than the stuff that's in this world. It's gonna be up above where my Lord and Savior is." And that's all I'm gonna say.
My name's Tammy Pirdan, and I've been here for several years. Takes a lot for someone to come up and speak, but I am a Christian. And as a mother, as a wife, as a woman of Walker County, I'm asking you not to put this on the ballot at all. I think the majority says they don't want it for many reasons. I understand economic development. But I can leave you with this. There was a candidate who said, "If we can take Georgia, we win." We don't want it. Walker County does not want it. So don't let them take it, so Walker County can win. That's all.
My name is Michael Robertson. I go to Baptist. A little nervous. But we took a trip a couple, I think about a month ago, we took the teens down to, to go to Snowtubin. And we were on the van, we were having a good time. And I was asking some of the teens, "What is their worst fear?" "We're just playing a game. What is their worst fear?" And they were given all these things and all this stuff. And they asked me what mine was. And I told them I had two of them. And this is great advice for everybody. With every action you take, with every, when you're voting or whenever you're trying to put something on a ballot, it's like, if you were standing before God, would he say, "Well done" to you? Or is what we're doing, what we're voting yes on or no on, or what we're putting on a ballot, is it gonna keep somebody else from getting saved? Keep somebody else from going to heaven? Because I don't want that on me. And I hope nobody here wants that on them.
My name's David Walker. I'm one of ten children. I was sixteen-year-old in nineteen fifty-six. My family received a call that my brother had been in an accident. We went to the hospital. Found out that a drunk driver had crossed the center line, hit him head-on. Shannon, have you ever stood and watched your brother die from alcohol? This is what happened to us. Have you ever checked out the Kennedy family? I think it was during the prohibition that they brought all this liquor into the United States? And what it's done to their family? They're still paying the price. I ask you, please do not put this on the ballot.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I want anybody to leave and say they didn't get hurt.
I'm Debbie Farr. I've lived in Walker County my whole life. I'm in public education at the moment as a teacher, and I see every day my kids come from homes that have been broken up from alcohol. I have to deal with that. As a special education teacher, I deal with kids who don't have any parents when they're at home because their parents are somewhere else and not taking care of them. And I deal with the heartaches when we get phone calls at school, when we have parents who have been put in jail because they've been doing alcohol and they've gotten out and gotten drunk and driving or whatever the case might be. And as a public educator, we have to deal with those needs every single day. And if you put this out there and you put this near a school, we have parents who every day are trying to get their lives back together. And if they have to come right past that place to, that sells alcohol, drink alcohol, whatever the case might be, you are being a stumbling block to our families who we are trying to desperately keep together and keep our kids together. So please do not do this.
My name is Michael Millhines. I'm a resident of Walker County, and I sit under Brother Jeff Brown. Shannon, I've never got to thank you for the opportunity that you gave me in two thousand and seven. I worked for Shannon for a while. I was right out of prison, and nobody would have me. I was a convicted felon. Shannon gave me a really great chance. I was a drug addict. Alcohol wasn't really my thing of choice, but if I couldn't get drugs, I'd drink. Nothing good ever came of it for me, but a ruined family, imprisonment. Shannon Whitfield, that church that I go to is my sanctuary. You seen me come out of a dark time in my life, and it didn't end for a long time after that. And when I started going to Valley View, if there was something like that across the street from it, I'd be right over there today. I'm asking, please don't even put it on the ballot.
Okay, I know we've been here a couple hours now, but I've always made the pledge that when people come to the public meetings, we'll let people speak and be heard because it is a public forum. It is the time when you can come and address the county government, the county leadership. So I never want anybody to feel like they didn't get an opportunity to speak. We still got several more items on our agenda, but does anybody still feel like they need to speak?
Oh, thank you for letting us speak.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, sir, come on up.
Yeah, I'll make it real brief. My name is Earl Gross. I know that the scripture says that righteousness exalphate nation and sin is a reproach. And I think that would go for counties too. And just consider that, what bringing that in would be. One other thing is, what I fear is that when you bring, when you bring it down to one hundred and fifty feet, what is gonna be next? If they just do away with all restrictions at all? And so I just ask of you, y'all just consider this. And of course, we prayed for y'all for your decision and just let the Lord speak to you. And he'll speak through the scriptures too. And so, thank you very much.
My dear everybody, please state your name for the record.
My name is Kathy Bates, and I live in Chickamauga, and I'm retired. I worked for probably taste parking jettings for almost thirty years. And alcohol is not something we want to allow to be so close to the church. Because it shows disrespect. And I think it's the board, you're showing disrespect. You know, when I worked for my doctors, when I'm gonna go into a store and I want to lose my temper, I didn't. When I wanted to go somewhere with my children and lose my temper, I didn't. First of all, God, but second of all, who I represented? And who were you gonna represent? And for the first person that has an accident or kills someone, are they to call you? Do you want their family to call you and say, "Hey, Shannon, now you've got three children, got two daughters and one son. And when you came into office, I was for you. I thought, wow, we're gonna get a Christian." Because I've had kids that's worked for you too, my kids, but my friends' children. And they told me what a good man you was. And you can't speak out of two sides of your mouth. You can't say, "I'm a Christian in this side," and then go against what's clearly spoken in the Bible. Now, you may not have to answer to me or any of these people in here. But just like I had to answer to my employer, I had to answer to my children for what I did. And most of all, I had to answer to God. And you, and you, and you. Some of y'all have looked kind of bored, and I'm, you know, I'm not really an elegant speech speaker. But let me tell you this, you're gonna have to answer to God. And for the first child that's hurt, first child that's killed, or man or woman, and I hear about it, I may not be knocking on your door, but I'll be calling you. And Shannon, I just can't believe you. I mean, I can't believe you'd even want it on the ballot. How much money do you have to have? How much money does? I think we could get a lot more for this county if we got down on our knees and prayed than liquor could bring in. But y'all are gonna be in judgment. I don't know if you're Christians or not. But if I was a Christian, there's no way that I'd even put it on the ballot. It may not. Y'all can listen. I've watched all y'all's body language. Some of you haven't been listening. Shannon, you've been barely ten, and I appreciate that. But good luck.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Thank you. I think you've been here the longest.
I've been listening to everybody and...
Because you were here when I got here, and I got here at five-twenty.
My name is Ramsey Blackman, and lived in Walker County for several years. And I'm proud to say that I live in Walker County. It's a beautiful place. I love it. We're raising our family. We go to church in Walker County. My son stood up and spoke, and I'm real proud that he did that. And appreciate the time that you give everybody. And, you know, my heart's real heavy about this alcohol thing because, you know, it's affected my life greatly. And I know we're not trying to take alcohol away from people. That's not what's going on the ballot or what you're proposing to put on the ballot. But putting this closer to churches and things like that, it's not good. Nothing good's gonna come of it. When I was a kid, we lived down the road from a package store. And nothing good ever happened at the package store down the road. There was always a drunk going in or coming out, driving down the road. There was a lot of DUIs on the road. It was easy access for my family that drank to go down to the package store. And I wouldn't want that, make that, I wouldn't want to make that readily available for someone who's struggling with addiction or alcohol or having trouble, like this one brother spoke. It's real brave to stand up and to testify to the troubles that alcohol's caused. And I'm proud for people to stand up. And I'm proud for the people in this county who've come together to stand up collectively as a group and say they don't like it. And we pray that you just listen to us. And my plea to you today is, take time, I know someone said it earlier, take time to pray about it. And I pray that you won't put it on the ballot and don't let this go until after the elections. And let's just give us some time to let everybody pray. And, you know, I praise God that God has brought different denominations, different churches, different walks of life. He's brought us all together. God's trying to unify his people, not just one church, but the church. And I think God's trying to teach us something and show us something in this. But no matter which way this goes, whether it goes on the ballot or not, God ultimately will be glorified in some way. All things work for those who love the Lord. And I just pray that you just keep it off the ballot and wait till after elections, and let's see what happens then. That's my plea.
Sir, my name is Ted Verbal. I'm pastor at Mission Ridge Baptist Church, and I've been living in Walker County for, since ninety-seven. I don't really have anything to add to what the pastors have said. I'm also, I amen what they said, but I would like to just say this. I know that when the gentleman had mentioned something about our system of government and putting on the ballot, the voters spoke and our system of government worked when you were elected. So that was part of it there. But the second thing I call into question is this, is how reliable the referendum is gonna be, assuming that it went. I know that a lot of voters are not informed in terms of what's gonna be on the ballot. You've heard tonight an expression of the casualties and the downside of what could happen. And I amen everything that has been said. Voters will not, some voters will not have vetted that, will not have considered the consequences of that when they vote. And I know that some voters, as honest and as trying to be as aware as they are, they may vote yes and having not vetted, actually thought through the issue. So I would ask you, first of all, not to put it on the ballot, but also consider that I'm not exactly sure that that's either the best way to get the public's opinion on an issue.
This man.
My name is Rita Aders and I in no way am a public speaker. But I was hoping somebody else would ask this question, and they haven't. We've talked about the distance from the front door to the front door. But my biggest fear, and well, my prayer is that the good Lord will talk to your heart and let upon your heart not to do it, put it on the ballot at all. But should that happen, my biggest fear is, one of the gentlemen brought it up, voters are not gonna know what they're voting for because of the verbiage of what is in the referendum. You talk about the footage from the door to door, but it doesn't say door to door from churches or schools. So you're gonna have people that will vote yes because they don't understand that that's what you're talking about, that it can be from any building. Okay, so I wanted to ask, is there any way that it could be reworded to say that? That so layman's terms, that they would understand? And it's not like something being snuck in on people to where they don't understand what they're voting for.
Well, the team worked hard to try to get it in layman's terms as best they could because we didn't want to make it confusing or trickery.
It is confusing though.
You know, that was something that we took very serious. I mean, I do see the point that there may be additional clarification from front door. It was gritty, but a little earlier, front door, they bona fide ENAC establishment. You could go a step further and say from a front door, you're from a church.
Or just, that may include, if you do that verbiage, that may even include churches or schools.
Well, it doesn't affect schools.
Okay, well then churches.
Just churches.
Okay, but people need to understand that that's what they're talking about. Because I guarantee you, people that I've talked about are like, "What?" You know, and a lot of people are not gonna understand it in those terms. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Robert Morris. Live in Walker County since 2011. Alcohol is not good. It's destroyed two marriages. It's almost got me killed. It's by the grace of God I'm even here. Remember driving. Driving home one night. I was so drunk I couldn't keep my car and I rode. I mean, I shook my head, rode windows down, tried to, but I mean, I was all over the road on the main highway back up in Tennessee, 68 Highway. And if I'd, it's just, I didn't meet no car. It was about 3:00 in the morning, but if I had, man, it, you know, I probably wouldn't be here. Whoever I ran into probably wasn't either. One night, here in Chattanooga, I ran a stop sign. And I was drinking. It makes you, alcohol makes you do crazy things. And I just stomped it to the floor. Got almost to the stop sign, here comes this car just easing by like it. And I hit my brakes all at once and I probably missed that car. I don't know how, how much, you know, it was real close. And it scared the headlights out of me there. But alcohol was, that was the cause of it. I was driving one night out in Texas. And at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, drinking. But it run out in front of me. Almost lost control of the car. My wife was with me at the time. And we just, you know, almost hit this guy, almost wrecked the car. It's just by the grace of God that I didn't. But I'm just saying alcohol is not good. They've got enough down here, you know? So, just give you something to think about.
Any one that wants to speak that has it?
I'm not gonna speak about it, I'm gonna say a few words if you don't mind. My name is Jerry Young. I've lived in Walker County for 68 years. I went to Vietnam, fought in Vietnam, should've died over there, but God spared me. I've seen people over there blowed all to pieces. They were drunk, get liquor over there, you can get dope over there. I stayed away from it. And I said, "If I'm gonna die, I'm gonna know what I'm doing." But I know what, I know what liquor do to people. When we had Linwood as our own city, I was a councilman for 12 years. And they tried to get liquor over there and we bowled it down. But we had a beer package jet, everybody knows it, I'm sure. And it's just no good. We had the only beer in Walker County at that time, Linwood did. They tried to get liquor, but the people weren't passing. But beer destroyed, just look at Linwood now. We had a good town back then, we had our own police department and everything. City Hall, had it all. And we let the wrong people get in there and sell beer. And it just was drugged down to nothing. The houses just went away. We're getting new things built over there now, hopefully to get the city back the way it used to be. But you are a Christian, right?
Yes, sir.
You go to church?
Yes, sir.
Do you know that you're gonna be held accountable for this? You have, God's gonna judge you for this. He says, "Woe to those who put strong drink to man's mouth." That means the people that sells it, God's gonna judge them. You're gonna pay for it. Shannon, you need to not put this on the ballot. You are a Christian, I don't see how you can put this on the ballot, being a Christian. I just don't see how you can do it. You're going against what God says. If you're a Christian and you know God is your Savior in your heart, God's gonna judge you. He's gonna deal with you. Everyone that boasts for this, God's gonna judge you. We all gonna be judged. And if you put this into law, you're gonna have to answer for it. Please, please reconsider this, don't put it on the ballot. People, the Christians don't want it on the ballot, that's why we're here tonight. Don't put this on the ballot, reconsider this. We don't need liquor in this town. If you get it, Shannon, we gonna have deaths. Every death could be up in your judgment. Stop and think about it, pray about it. If you truly are a Christian and you serve God, he won't let you put that on the ballot. He won't do it, I'm telling you. It's a sin. So you need to really think of what you're doing. These people here come from all different churches because they don't want it in our communities. We know it would destroy people, it would destroy families. Liquor is no good for nothing. I don't know of a good thing that liquor's ever done, except destroy families' lives and kill people. So please, I bet you not put it on the ballot.
My name's Kevin Swafford and I'm a resident of Walker County. I live in Roswell, Georgia. I didn't plan to speak either. I'm Senator Brother Jeff Brown at Valley View Baptist Church. And I can say from personal experience, of course, just like many of you, that alcohol's done nothing good in my life. And even though like Brother Michael had mentioned earlier, he wasn't much of a drinker. I mean, I was more of a drug user, but I was the same. I would do alcohol if I could, if I couldn't get anything else. I'd spent nights in jail over here because of it, because of my decisions as a young, a young man. And I will, I will say that Jesus Christ has saved me and that we represent the same majority. I don't know about everybody else, I know this may not be a big issue for other people, but for us as Christians, Bible says, "Be not drunk with wine, wherein is excess, but be filled with the Spirit." And those two are directly opposed to each other, drunkenness and being filled with the Holy Spirit of God. So this is a big issue for us. And anybody that's a Christian, I don't recommend, I just say that Christians aren't drinking the Holy Spirit from the Word of God. And we need to stand up and speak up for Jesus Christ and do something good for our community. I think that would be a great step in the right direction and I would fully support that.
Amen.
I'm Kenneth Wilson. I thank God that, you know, I never had that problem with alcohol. And I thank the Lord that, you know, He spared me from that. But I look at this and I thank God for these Christian young people. We've got some fine young people. But we've got some, our society now, we teaching a generation, they've got no respect for parents, no respect for teachers, no respect for God's house. You know, they just, used to, we left the doors open. Now you gotta lock them, you gotta have cameras, you gotta have security guards. You know, and by not passing this, I think it's showing the young people that we still got some respect for God's house. And maybe we can bring some of that back. So, I'm getting it, I appreciate you.
Anybody else? Don't want anybody to leave out here, I'm serious about that. Y'all haven't figured that one out. I'm serious, I don't want anybody to ever come to a meeting so they didn't get heard. I mean, it's only 8:22. A lot of nights, I don't even get to head home this early. But, you know, I appreciate y'all all coming and speaking tonight. And one of the reasons why I wanted to keep this going as long as it did, and the gentleman in the back that I kinda had a little fun with, told him he was probably the first one here about 5:15, I think he said it best, you know, something good could come out of this. And I think part of that is, is y'all need to get involved. You know, you sit on the sidelines. And put me in the front of the line, folks. Back in 2016, you could put me in front of the line of not paying attention what's going on in our local government. And then when I figured out what was going on in our local government, I was all in. Because we had to fix and clean up our county, we was in a financial mess. And we was going off the financial cliff. And, you know, some people say, "Well, these are not easy meetings." The meetings that are not easier are the ones that the chairs are empty. Nobody shows up. You know, it's out of sight, out of mind. And so, I think here tonight, some of you got out of your comfort zone. And I was glad that we could be a part of that, to get you out of your comfort zone and not be afraid to engage and get involved. You know, I get criticized about a lot of things. If you hadn't heard of any of those things, you can always go to Facebook and you'll find it. But you know, I spend very, very little time on Facebook because y'all think alcohol's bad. Yeah. Facebook's worse. And I'd say that there's been as many homes destroyed over Facebook as there has been alcohol or drugs. You know, and I'm sure I'm gonna take some more heat before it's all over. But, you know, I knew when I signed up for this, many people were saying, "Why are you signing up to be the SO commissioner?" Because they knew that I wasn't politically correct. And, you know, some people that I thought were friends, when you get in office as elected official, you find out real quick who your friends are. Because your real friends don't start asking you for stuff. And asking you for those political favors. The ones that are truly not your friends are the ones that get mad at you and abandoning you because you don't do what they want you to do. And so I've had a fair number of folks, and some of y'all know them, one in particular, that was like this with me in 2016. And they've been trying to destroy me for the last three years because I wouldn't do those political favors. Because I'm not politically correct. We have focused, we have worked as a team to do everything we can do to get our county back on track. Some people would say, "This is a very hard decision to make." This decision and many others was not that difficult. One of the hardest decisions is when Robert and I went down to the state Capitol to talk to the state leadership about having to take our county back over. Back in early 2017, we didn't know if we was even gonna have enough money to make the payroll. And we went down there to prepare them for the worst. Because we'd already borrowed $4 million from Bank of Lufet and had lender after lender after lender tell us, "No, they wasn't gonna loan us any money." Because they'd seen us in the media, they'd read the papers, they'd read the audits. And so, you know, when I got down there that day, I had about an hour and 15 minute or so presentation to give this leadership of the state. And Senator Mullis, who had set the meeting up for us, he made the comment, "He's the commissioner, you've only got about 20 or 30 minutes and these folks have gotta go." So I just had to just totally regroup. And I made the statement to them, "I can do this in just two or three minutes." And I told them who I was, where I was from, and I said, "You wanna take your county back on a Monday or Friday because we're insolent." And they said, "What?" So I told them again. State treasurer says, "We don't have a plan for this, we don't have a go-to for this, we don't have a fund for this." And he said, "Surely there's something that can be done, surely there's an option, if you tried everything." And I said, "Well, I've got a piece of paper right here from Regions Bank that says that the governor will co-sign the loan for $4 million, they'll loan it to us." Now, how many of you in the room tonight who we were that close to being out of business? Before or during the election or after the election? Most of you don't, I've seen one or two hands go up because you're not engaged. And you know, and one of the things when I did get elected, and we had 50, 60 people showing up over at the other office building, I asked people, "Stay engaged in your local government. Don't stop coming, stay engaged, thank you for coming." And I tried to get to every meeting at least 30 minutes early and I'm usually the last one to leave. And so, when we were there in front of the state and they said that the governor would have to sign that, and then they told me the governor didn't have authorization to sign it because the legislators would have to go back in session to authorize the governor to sign it. And so through all of that, they said, "Let's keep working on this." Well, another local bank called back and said, "We've reconsidered, come talk to us." That was First Volunteer Bank, when Chattanooga met with her team. They loaned us the $4 million. And all through this, I have seen God's hand working in our county. But this is one of those topics that, the old saying goes, "You can make some of the people happy some of the time, but none of the people all the time." There's a lot of truth to that. I had made my decision very, very early on, what I was gonna do with this action here tonight. And I could've stopped this a long time ago, I could've stopped this an hour and a half ago. But that wasn't the right thing to do. Because I wanted y'all to be engaged in your government. And we've got a very important election coming up, couple of really important elections coming up. And you need to encourage your friends, your neighbors, and our young people. friends, your neighbors, and our young people to vote. Now, I know many of you here tonight don't want this on the ballot because you're scared to death what's gonna happen. Some of you that have talked to me privately that said, "Well, put it on the ballot," told me they knew what would happen. And so as the sole commissioner of a county, you know, it's very difficult to make everybody happy all the time. It's just about impossible. You know, it's a, it's a big responsibility that I take very serious to hold this position as sole commission. And our county has been through some dark days. And, you know, it's been amazing what God has done in our county over the last three years. And I'm just tickled that I got to be the worker bee to allow God to work in our community and our county. You know, to take us from a place where we had a junk status credit rating and I was scrambling to borrow money to pay the payroll, to Moody's rating us with an A1 credit rating back in August. In just a three year, two and a half, two and a half years. But I don't take credit for that because I know that that wasn't me doing that. There was a lot of hard people working, doing the right things, a lot of staff members, a lot of other leaders in our county government, a lot of department heads. But I also very much know that God was in control. And I feel like that God has probably used this issue of alcohol to bring attention to what we're seeing here tonight. Not necessarily about the issue, but that people need to get involved in their government. And people need to be engaged. And you also need to realize that not every person that's elected, even though we all get labeled as a politician, doesn't mean we're on the take. Doesn't mean we're corrupted. And I know that that's somewhat, they say, "Oh, that comes with a territory or that's just politics." Folks, that's not true. I've had people ask me, "Well, why are not other people running for the board positions? Why are there other offices in our county that nobody's running?" Because people don't wanna be under the microscope and they don't wanna live in the glass house. And they don't wanna be on Facebook. It's true. You know, I have been trying to encourage a few people to run for different positions and they go, "No, not with Facebook." And if you'll notice, I very seldom post on Facebook. I get on there and monitor it a little bit and try to keep up with things. And, you know, keep up with, unfortunately, a lot of times it's keeping up with funerals, who's passed away. You know, I know that's sad, but that's an easy, quick way of finding out things when you've got a short amount of time. So, you know, we, as a county, we have a bright opportunity and a bright future ahead of us. But folks, I'm here to tell you, a five-person board is not gonna be the all answer. Okay? Staying with a sole commission is not gonna be the answer. There's about seven different forms of government that you can have in Georgia as a county. None of them are perfect. None of them. They vote, they all have strengths, they all have weaknesses, but none of them are perfect. What we have now is a sole commission's not perfect. Going to a five-person board's not perfect. And the easiest way for me to sum that up, the reason it's not perfect, is because there's humans involved. Because we're all human. Okay? We're all sinners and we're all imperfect. And so it's not gonna be perfect. And so we need people that will run and that will stand up. And, you know, we live in a free country where we're one of the few that have the privilege and opportunity to be in a free country, to be able to run for public office. But most importantly, I think what we've demonstrated here tonight that should be seen across the world, is that we can come have this conversation. We can assemble together. We can have a meeting such as this and pray before every meeting. And we can allow you to come up here where you're not feeling like you're in fear of your government or of your neighbor and have a candid conversation about issues in our community that not everybody's gonna agree with. But there's a lot of men and women that have sacrificed greatly for that. And I appreciate you speaking here tonight about your service and thank you for your service. And I know there's many others of you here that have sacrificed greatly. And it is a sacrifice for anyone that is elected to public office. Because you do live in a glass house. I know many of you that are pastors, you also live in a glass house. And it never stops. Some of you talk about the phones, calls, the visits and everything. My phone also is on 24/7. My family also takes the abuse. You know, we went on vacation year before last, went to Florida, thought we was getting away. Didn't work out quite that well. Second day I was there, went down to the pool and floated around the pool for about an hour and a half with a guy. And we talked about the north end of Walker County. Because that's where he was from. But, you know, that's part of it. And I love people. I love serving you. I love serving this community. I walked away from a very cushioned job per se in a family business to be able to come forward and serve. Because as I said earlier, put me in the front of the line is being guilty. Because none of us wake up in the mornings and think, "You know, I need to go check on my local government. I need to go pull the audit and look at it." In the prior administration, to do that, that was an open records request and you had to put some money on the table. But we changed that. We've got about twenty-six years of audits on our website. I've read every one of them, more than once. I know that's kinda whacked out. And I've also read a lot of our other surrounding communities' financial reports as well. Because some of them have done very well financially and have managed well and some of them have not. And there's one or two of them that we're catching on, folks. And we're gonna be a solid, financially sound community. Because one of my goals has been from day one, is to work to lead this county completely out of debt. We have people that are questioning those debt numbers. They sell, there's rumors and disinformation out there that we really were not seventy million dollars in debt. They just gotta go look at the audit. Y'all spend great money every year to get those audits done, if you realize it or not. There are about seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year that you pay as taxpayers to have those audits done to make sure those numbers are correct. The 2016 audit lacked just a few thousand dollars of saying that we were seventy million dollars in debt. Some people still don't believe that, but I don't know how else to convince you that a third-party independent company out of another state has come in here and has validated those numbers. It's real. Through this time, over the last three-plus years, with sacrifice by many in our county for higher taxes, higher fees, we're paying for a lot of those mistakes of the past. But we've also, as a county government, we've tightened up the belt. Many of you probably don't know because you don't think or felt the need to go read the audit, but the audit will tell you on about page six, I believe it is, at the bottom left, the last sentence says that expenses over prior year was down over three million dollars. We cut expenses over three million dollars in one year. We've paid off somewhere around thirty million dollars worth of debt. And, you know, there's a lot of things in our county government that we still need. We've got eighty-six structure buildings that this county owns. Now, that's a big number. But when we say individual structures, some of them are small, some of them are large. But when you look from an insurance, when you're insuring property, there's eighty-six structures that we insure as county government property. Folks, there's about half of those that's got leaking roofs still. Okay? But we have tried to make every dollar screen that goes out of that office. To make sure that everything we do, we can justify. And so this gave me a great opportunity to share some of these other things with y'all here tonight. Because y'all were here and you showed up. And I figured if you stayed past 8:30, we can have a continued conversation. I know some's had to leave. I know some people have health concerns and other responsibilities and I get that. But I also wanna say, I appreciate our young folks that's come out tonight and have spoke. Y'all need to pat 'em on the back, hug their neck. Because that's not easy to do. And if there's any generation in our country that has pressure on them, it's that generation that's coming up. It's real important. And, you know, they're our future, folks. They're the next generation coming up. I don't say this to be bragging. I don't say this to be boastful. And I don't say this to even insinuate any remotely that I'm perfect. We all have our faults. So don't take this comment the wrong way. But fortunately, I've never consumed alcohol in my life. Never have. Have no desire to. It was mentioned earlier that we have three kids. One of those is little Daniel, who we adore, who's eight years old, that we've had for five years. Because he come from a broken home of substance abuse. Okay? So we've gone over and above to take a young family member into our home to raise a cause of substance abuse. So I live that side of it. I see that. I've been brought up in a home where even when we had convenience stores in our business, my parents refused to even sell alcohol in a convenience store. They, we had two of them, didn't sell alcohol at all. Because they both come from broken homes. So I get it. Even when I was on the city council in Chickamauga, they put an alcohol question on the ballot for the commissioners, I mean, excuse me, the council members to vote on. But I didn't feel like at that time it was my decision whether or not it went on the ballot or not, even though I knew I was gonna vote no for it at the ballot. You know, so being in an elected position is not easy. And you're always making tough decisions. And, you know, some people say, you know, what you do affects a few people. I don't look at it that way. What I do affects about seventy thousand people. And every decision that we make, and a lot of times people think, "Well, he's the sole commissioner. He's the dictator." I think I was even kinda mentioned that, I think, once. Folks, I don't operate that way. Everything that I do, we fully vet out. We go over, we look at, we analyze. Because no one person has all the answers. We've got a great team of people. And everything that we've had here tonight on this agenda, including this question, the team has put on here and has tried to do what they feel like the citizens want done in the community. Again, many of you realize, and the reason you're here, because several of you told me you want it on the ballot, but you know that if you put it on the ballot, y'all know it's gonna pass, most likely. Okay? But again, I don't make decisions on political. I try to make decisions of what I feel is right and what's in the best interest for everybody. And that may or may not win elections. But I didn't come in and put myself in this position because I was doing it so I could be the most popular. I did it because I felt like God was calling me to do this. And that's why I was, you know, walked away from something that had a lot of security to walk into something I knew was gonna get a lot of criticism. I had made my decision on this long before we ever got to this meeting tonight. I did get a little choked up earlier when Michael Millines come up and spoke because I saw where Michael was back when he was in a tough position. And I appreciate him coming forward and speaking. And I was glad I was, had a little part of that. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things, as we leave here tonight, regardless, there's still a lot of people that's not gonna be happy. But like I said, I had made a decision early on about this topic. And that decision was decided even before a lot of you spoke. But again, I'm glad that you did come and spoke because I think it helped a lot of you. It helped a lot of you neighbors sitting next to you. And I'm sure there's a lot of people gonna watch this video, but it's also gonna help in many different ways. But one of those ways that's important to me is that you're, again, and I've said this, but that you're active and you're involved in your local government. And you've been willing to come forward and stand up for something that you believe in. And I know there's been a lot of other things that we've had on agendas that you probably believed in, but you wasn't paying attention. But we've got to stay involved and be active in our government. And, not that you've gotta be the junkie that looks at every audit, I get it. But you need to be involved. So my decision that I made early on was that I'm gonna let this issue die and leave it as it is. And that the regulations that had been in place, have been in place for quite some time. And we're just gonna leave them as they are. All right. We've got a little bit more business here to handle tonight.
Yes, sir. I know this is out of order. I'll state my name, Eddie Frye. Because what you've done, I'd like to set something up. There's a lot of pastors here. We all have faults. But there's one thing that I know, since I've been a pastor, when somebody's praying for me, I can get through the hard times. And I'd like to ask you, could we start a group of pastors, maybe once a month, to come to pray for you, pray for the county? And not only pray, what if we have one Saturday a month? We have people in our churches that can build, that can fix stuff. And we do it for free. Now, you say, "We have to deal with things too. And we have budgets and too." But if we can get together as Walker County, and we have leaks in our buildings, and we can have once, one Saturday a month to come and fix one roof, that doesn't cost the taxpayers a penny except for the supplies, could we do that to help and back you?
I'm all in on getting together and pray. And just to share with y'all a little bit more about some of your other elected officials, and I'll let them, let it be known if they desire who's involved. But there's a group of us elected officials that do get together right now, once a month and pray together. And they're here locally in Walker County. And so thank you for that offer and take care of them. Okay. Now, the good stuff. Resolution R-00520 to authorize a referendum to impose a levy and collect a special purpose local ops and sales tax, SLOST, within Walker County, conditioned upon approval by the majority of the qualified voters residing within Walker County voting, and a referendum thereon to be held on May 19th, 2020, for those purposes. The SLOST was put into effect, to my knowledge, the first SLOST was put on the ballot by Roy Parrish. And to my knowledge, it has passed every time since then and has been a very important part of our local economy. and has been a very important part of our local economy. But most importantly, it takes the pressures off of property taxes.
Yeah.
We have no desire to ever be in a position where we're forced to have to raise property taxes.
That's right.
It's just something that we don't like to do. I didn't like to do it when I had to do it the one time.
Yep.
And I said then, "I hope this is the last time."
Amen.
And so, we're not gonna go into all the details tonight, because I know it's getting late, and it's in the packets, it's online, and we're gonna be talking about it more. But, the SPOLOSHED that we currently have in place expires on September 30th of this year. Well, there's a lot of regulations in the state law of how you have to do that, to put it on the ballot, and this particular thing is a decision that only the voters can make. I cannot make this decision. The only decision that I can make on this is to get our cities together to come to the table to determine to put it onto the ballot and put a list of projects that the funds would be invested into to make our infrastructure better. It's for infrastructure improvement into our communities. So, the five city councils, which includes Fort Oathor, because there is a small portion of northwest part of our community that's Walker County, but it's also within the city limits of Fort Oathor.
Yeah.
So anytime we do something like this, we have to include, not have to, we do it because they're part of us, we include Fort Oathor. And so, this is an intergovernmental agreement here tonight that has already been signed and executed by all five cities. We are the last ones to get this done. And in the past, there has been times that when the cities and the county come together to negotiate and work out the allocations of these funds and how they would be invested, and what the percentages are, that they ended up in a lot of hard feelings, a lot of bitterness, a lot of hurt, a lot of legal expense, and a lot of mediation because of disagreements and lack of unity. We are happy to report to you tonight that when we met with the five cities and their leadership and our leadership, we worked this out in about thirty-five minutes. And that's, I think, a testament to the strong leadership that we have in our counties, in our cities as well, and everyone coming together in the best interest of our citizens. Again, this is a continuation of a one cent sales tax that's been on our books in our county for many, many years. And if you look at the infrastructure list, and we'll talk more in the future about, this is critical for our county to move forward and to do the things that need to be done, to fix a lot of these roofs and failing systems that we have that have been neglected over time. So, at this time, I'm going to sign this into our minutes to put the SPOLOSHED back on the ballot. And another reason too, we're doing this now with the way it runs out in September, if we don't do this in the May election, it's going to expire. Because even with the May ballot, the soonest it could be on the sales tax would be October 1st. And so, if we waited till November, which some would say is the political thing to do, wait till November, then you have a gap, and then it can't even be executed and started until April 1st. And so, to have the continuity that we need and to get this started October 1st, so we don't have a loss in revenue coming in for this, this has to be done at this time. And we've got one day extra to get this done, and that's tomorrow morning. So, that's how important that this is, that we get this done. So, we're gonna sign this into the record and partner with our cities to put the SPOLOSHED back on the ballot. I've got about six copies of this to sign. That way, every city and the county will have an original, and they will also be executing originals as well. So, we'll be passing these all around. Maybe I didn't have them all here tonight, we executed a few there. Okay, also, with this, not only is there the intergovernmental agreement, but we also have the resolution to put the SPOLOSHED on the ballot. This is, also, shows what the wording will be. It's quite long to meet the state requirements of everything that's gotta be on the ballot. But this next item here is the resolution, and I've just executed the intergovernmental agreement. I had those in my stack backwards. But it's all pertaining to the same action item of the SPOLOSHED. For those of you that didn't get an agenda tonight, be sure and go online and at least download the pages that have the SPOLOSHED list on it, so you can see how these dollars are intended to be invested over the next six years. This is a six-year SPOLOSHED. Messing my clerk up here, it's going too fast. Okay. This is something we're excited about here. How many of you in the room here are either a full-time or part-time farmer or working agriculture? Just a few of them. I know there might've been a few others here earlier, but... This is Resolution R-00620, a resolution of the Sole Commissioner of Walker County to create a study committee to best practices for poultry houses, whereas the University of Georgia Extension finds poultry production to be the number-one agriculture enterprise in Georgia, accounting for approximately fifty percent of the value of farm products produced, and whereas poultry is the largest commodity produced in Walker County, with roughly two hundred poultry houses generating a 2018 farm gate value of fifty-six point seven million dollars. And whereas Walker County ranks fourteenth in the state of Georgia in the number of farms, with seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and six acres of farmland covering nearly twenty-five percent of the geography of our, area of our county. And whereas businesses and individuals work in other sectors such as banking, real estate, accounting, transportation, depend on the poultry industry for their livelihood. And whereas a study needs to be undertook, taken, to review existing land use regulations and restrictions to provide for the continued success of our local farmers, while simultaneously providing protection for all citizens. And whereas considering for issues affecting property values, public nuisance, property rights, and future developments, which is key, should be part of this review. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County creating a study committee that is created, excuse me, there is created the study committee for the best practices of poultry houses. They'll be just focusing on that one topic. Number two, members, a committee shall consist of the following. And these are people that have all agreed to volunteer their time, and these are all people that are in the agriculture community currently. Mike Bunne will be our chairperson, Beth Berry, John Howard, Eugene Ridley, Cindy Askew, Wade Hutchison, Philip Cantrell, and Sam Bowden. Number three, powers and duties. The committee shall undertake a study of the conditions, needs, issues, and problems mentioned above or related thereto, and recommend any action or amendments to existing zoning ordinances the committee deems necessary or appropriate. Number four, meetings. The chairperson shall call the meetings of the committee. The committee may conduct such meetings at such place and such time as they deem necessary or convenient to enable it to fully and effectively perform the duties and accomplish the objectives and the purpose of this resolution. Number five, report. A, in the event the committee adopts any specific findings or recommendations that include suggestions for proposed amendments to existing ordinances or the creation of a new ordinance, the chairperson shall file a report of the same to the Secretary of the Walker County Planning Commission and the Clerk of the Governing Authority of Walker County. B, in the absence of an approved report, the chairperson may file with the Secretary of the Walker County Planning Commission a copy of the minutes of the meeting, of the committee, in lieu thereof. So it be adopted, this, the thirteenth day of February 2020, Walker County, Georgia, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner. So what this is doing is putting an official committee together that will study the concerns and issues around poultry houses by people that are in this business, that are in this industry, that make their living for this. We're having a lot of good growth in our county. We're averaging about a hundred and twenty-five new single-family homes being built in our county, on average, for the last four years consecutively. And we're already off to a strong start this year.
Amen.
Again, agriculture is the number-one industry in our county. It's our heritage, it's also our future, and we've gotta protect that. There's a class action lawsuit right now in Dade County over poultry houses. There's twenty residents that have sued a poultry producer in a class action lawsuit. That's neighbor fighting against neighbor. We don't want that to happen.
No.
We wanna be proactive, we wanna put some of the brightest people of our county together to brainstorm, to look at best practices, look at what other counties have done, and look at how we protect our agriculture, how we protect our farmers, but also how we grow and make Walker County better, and everybody to have their place that they call home. So that's what that committee's about. All right, number six, Resolution R-20, excuse me, seven dash twenty to appoint members to the Walker County Animal Control Board. A resolution of the Sole Commissioner of Walker County to appoint a member of the Animal Control Board, whereas OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-three A two provides that the Animal Control Board is the authority charged with exercising those powers set forth. OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-three is determined by the county governing authority. And whereas Section 10-81 of the Code of Ordinance of Walker County, Georgia, gives the governing authority appointment powers of the membership of the Animal Control Board. And whereas there are currently vacancies on the Animal Control Board created by expiration of the term of Dr. Ben Benson, Betty Keys, Allison Smith, and whereas the Sole Commissioner of Walker County recognizes the qualifications and commitment to the public service of Dr. Ben Benson, Betty Keys, and Emily Sadler. Therefore, be resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Dr. Ben Benson and Betty Keys are hereby reappointed to the Animal Control Board for a term beginning February 13th, 2020, and terminating on December 31st, 2022. Be it further resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, that Emily Sadler is hereby appointed to the Animal Control Board for a term beginning February 13th, 2020, and terminating on December 31st, 2021. So resolved and adopted, thirteenth day of February. Our Animal Control Board only meets if there's things that are triggered in our animal control ordinance for them to meet and take action on and have a hearing. Most often, that's in and around dog bites, or animals that need to be classified as aggressive. And so, there's very finite things that they are responsible for and to make the decisions for the welfare of our community. And so, what happened, and kinda snuck up on us, all of the board members' terms had expired, December 31st. Fortunately, we've not had a need for a meeting. So we're playing a little catch-up here, about a month and a half, to get our board back in place. Allison was a former member, but also, most importantly, she was the former director of the animal shelter. And you always want your animal shelter director on this board, because they're heavily involved and they know the situations and all the documentation and keep up with it from a staff person. Allison is no longer with us, she's been gone for a little while, but she continued to function and be a part of the board. But Emily Sadler, since mid-last year, is our animal shelter director, so we're appointing her on that board. Dr. Benson is a veterinarian, you have to have a veterinarian on the board, and so he's agreed to serve again. And Betty Keys, for some of y'all that know her, you know she's just a jewel, just a sweet lady, and we don't wanna lose her, so we're reappointing her. All right, the last item we've got, this is an intergovernmental agreement that gets executed every year. This is one of those things, it's just housekeeping, I'm not gonna read all this to you. But, in essence, this is just where the City of LaFette, City of Tryon, Chautauqua County, Dade County, Lookout Mountain District Attorney's Office, and the Walker County Government work in concert with each other for the Lookout Mountain Judicial Task Force. And so, this is just agreement, reiterating everyone's commitment to continue this and to work in collaborations for the most efficiently to use taxpayer dollars and invest in this intergovernmental agreement. So we're gonna execute and approve this. Okay, the last item on our agenda is our statistical data report that we put out every month, and that we also have the four previous years. One of the things that's top on the list there is our animal shelter. We had a hundred and twenty-one dogs come in, a hundred, excuse me, twelve cats come in. We had a hundred and seventeen dogs go out, and twenty cats that went back out. Happy to report that we didn't have to euthanize any animals at all.
Thank you.
So that's a great thing. Well, this administration come in office, folks, it's the truth, so you need to know the facts. Our animal shelter regretfully was euthanizing between twenty-five to twenty-nine animals per week.
Right.
And we had to stop that.
Yeah.
And what happens, there's a lot of pressure that's put on shelters because of space, because of time, and because of money. And so, we made a commitment, as we started getting our hands around things in mid-2017, that we were not gonna do that anymore. We were only gonna euthanize animals if they were too sick or too aggressive to be in our community. And so, we went from being a county that would euthanize hundreds and hundreds of animals a year to, as you can see on this report, I'm sad to report that in 2019, for the entire year, we only had to euthanize thirty-eight animals. And we had about fourteen hundred animals that come into our shelter. And so, that's a testament to the hard work of the staff.
Amen.
And their willingness not to give up.
Right.
And so, a lot of times, again, you'll see stuff on social media about the animal shelter, folks. The animal shelter is amazing, we've got very dedicated people there. And the animal shelter there, a lot of times, is the animal's last hope.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of animals that are abused, neglected, and we've learned very quickly that it's not the animals that's the problem, it's the people that are the problem.
Yeah.
And so, we track this every single month, because one of the very first phone calls that I took, when I took office, was from a lady out of Atlanta that wanted to know what our euthanasian rate was and what our intake rate was. And I said, "I don't know, but we're gonna find out, and we're gonna start reporting it every month." And we consistently have done that. We bring attention to this, and we highlight this, and it's item number one on this report every single month. Our code enforcement, there was five hundred and seventy-six visual inspections that were in compliance. There was twenty citations written for locations that were not in compliance. Also, our fire department responded to four hundred and ninety responses by six hundred and ninety vehicles or fire apparatuses. They installed fifty-three smoke detectors in the month of January. The team in 2019 installed seven hundred and eighty-one smoke detectors. And I was happy to be a part of a celebration this morning where a couple of families came and met with a red cross. Were seven lives, plus an unborn baby, so eight lives were saved after Walker County Fire and Rescue People went and installed smoke alarms. And then, sometimes... And then, sometimes weeks, in one case, months later, their house caught on fire. And they totally attribute to being able to get out of that house because the smoke alarms woke them up. Because it's a hell of a night. So, our chief, and also Regina Dorsey, who's headed up this program that's been very responsive in this, they both were recognized and received rewards today by the Red Cross. And when they first got really engaged in this program, because in 2017, they only installed 21. 2018, they installed 228. In 2019, they installed 781. And already, this year, we've done 53. And so, when I knew this team was committed to this is when I asked the chief, when he ran out of smoke alarms that had been donated through Red Cross and other organizations, I said, "What are we going to do when we run out of smoke alarms?" Because I was checking his temperature. And he says, "Whatever we have to do, whatever we have to do in the fire budget, we're going to make sure that everybody in Walker County that doesn't have a smoke alarm that calls our number and asks for them, we're going to install those smoke alarms regardless of what we've got to do in our budget." And I knew then we had the right leadership, and we had the right team, and they were on a mission to get smoke alarms at every house in Walker County. Back in 2018, unfortunately, we had some deaths in our county due to house fires where there was no smoke alarms. I'm happy to report to you, in 2019, we had zero deaths in Walker County due to house fires. That's a dedication of a team putting 781 smoke detectors out. So if you don't have smoke detectors in your home, or if some of you that are watching this video don't have smoke detectors, call our fire department. They are thrilled to come out, because they would rather come out and meet you on those bases than to come when they're picking you up and dragging you out. So, use that service. There's no income requirements, there's no background checks, there's no nothing. They're going to come in and evaluate how many you need based off the square footage you have, and however many they feel like you need, that's what they're going to put in. So take advantage of this opportunity for this service. Mountain Cove Farm, we had 72 nights of stay down there in January. This is a part that's really exciting to me, new single-family home permits. Now, these are just permits that were pulled in the month of January of 2020 for just the county, the unincorporated. This doesn't include the cities, just the unincorporated areas. And y'all know how much rain we had in January?
Yes.
14 new single-family homes pulled in the month of January. Last year, we had 128 single-family home permits pulled. And Joe did a little article, I believe the average square footage of those homes was 1,890 square feet. Those are people that are committed to make this their home, if they're going to build that size of a house. And so, we want to welcome these people in our community. We need to get them involved at our churches.
Yes.
So, y'all can get that information from the tax office or the permitting office and know where those people are. Public relations, it was 42 stories printed. We added 83 members to our Facebook page, and Joe successfully got out 37 unique posts. So if you are going to use Facebook, there is a safe place to go. And that's the Walker County Facebook page, because that's where you're going to get all the facts and information. And if anybody tells you that this administration's hiding anything, they've not been on our Facebook page. Because Joe's put 37 news information articles and things on there, and that was a slow month for him. So, we have, I think we're approaching over 8,000 followers now, and so, that's the one place that's safe to go. Visitors to our website, 33,635 visitors to our website. We run 33,300 every single month. Email subscribers, if you're not on our email list, it's free. All you need is your name and your email address. And we added 87 members to that, and Joe does a great job once a month sending out an email list. Patching potholes. I know y'all have not seen any of those.
[laughter]
But we successfully, in January, patched 383 potholes. We're also excited, and Joe did a little article on, in 2020, we will be paving 36 miles of road in Walker County. We did about 25, 26 miles last year. Once we complete this this year, that will be completing, is it 65 miles, I believe? See, I believe it's 65, 65 miles roughly of road paved in Walker County. That would not have been possible if you folks hadn't have voted in the T-Splotch. Because to pave 36 miles of road, the estimate's about $6 million to do 36 miles of road. On the splotch, we're going to take one-third of our splotch and put into our public works. That's how important our road and transportation system is. We need $3 million worth of new equipment. We're putting $6 more million into road paving. Based off the splotch that's coming in now, if we paved an average of 30 miles of roads a year, if we did that consistently, ongoing, 30 miles of road a year, it would take us 23 years to pave every road in Walker County. That's another reason why this splotch is important, is we're going to take and put a third of that money into our roads. Our transit system that's provided for people that don't have transportation or not able to physically drive is 2,047 transit trips. That was the last item on our agenda. Before you go, as always, and I mean as always, at the close of every meeting, the business on the agenda has been completed. The commissioner will now open the floor for general discussion related to Walker County. Speakers are asked to limit their questions and comments to five minutes and keep the topics related to Walker County business. So is there anyone here that has anything they would like to say and address the leadership of Walker County at this time? If you would, step forward and speak your name. Have all y'all spoken out?
I'm Rick Talent, taxpayer, and I used the term earlier that I want to clarify, the county dictator, the elected sole dictator. That's a political term that's not a slam against Shannon Whitfield. It's just a type of government that we have where, at this time, whoever is in office has the legal authority to sign things into law without regard for us, the citizens. And I appreciate what you've done here tonight.
Amen.
This says a whole lot, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Shannon.
All right. Joe McGee, the man behind the cameras, guess something we'll share.
I normally don't talk at these things, and I didn't have a speech prepared at all, but I would be remiss to not address some of the pastors in our audience tonight about the 2020 census that's coming up, especially if you're wanting to do something that helps our community. The census brings in about $2,300 per person for Walker County, and that's through really about 55 different federal programs where the money passes through. We have a complete count committee for Walker County. I chair that. And we're working on several events to help promote the census and its importance to Walker County. One of those events, we would like to partner with churches on for late March. If you're a pastor, if, after the meeting's over with, if you would see me real quick so I can get contact information, we have some committee members that are supposed to be working with churches, and I want to make sure that they're in contact with you guys if you're interested in what we're planning on putting together. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, the census is very important in the understanding, there's an estimated that the last census 10 years ago, there might have been as many as 30% of our county residents that did not get counted.
Right.
And that's a lot of money. Federal programs and state programs, it's based off your population that our county left, was left off or didn't get as much as we could have.
That money that he talked about, is that per person, that field, is that?
Yes.
Per person?
Twenty, about $2,300 per person is the overall value over the census.
In your household?
Yeah.
So you've got five in your household, $2,300 per person.
It's that important to us. All right. Anyone else have anything they want to add before we close out? All right. Hearing none, I look forward to seeing y'all back here in two weeks.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
Thank y'all.
Thanks for being here.